Yes. Okay. All right, welcome everyone. Sarah Fox, are you on? There you go, James.
Sarah Fox is trying to get in.
Thank you, I just let her in. There we go.
Hi Sarah, just to give you a heads up, I had a hard time getting in.
All right, well, we've got 130 people in right now. So. All right, I will call the meeting to order at 7:02. Sarah, I'm assuming you can hear us? Okay, great. I think we finally have our mic issues worked out, thanks to Stephen. Okay, so that leads us to commendations first. This evening, we've got Principal Brian Oda with us to talk to us about the Glover School. Brian, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to speak about a program that we began last year and are continuing this year. And you'll understand as I go through the presentation, how important this is now more than ever. Amanda Lockerbie, our school psychologist, had been concerned over the last four years that at least eight students in the Glover community have suffered a loss of one of their parents. So she reached out to Care Dimensions, a local nonprofit organization which offers a variety of services for adults and pediatrics for people with life-limiting illnesses, and they provide support for their family and caregivers. So on March 4th of last year, Kristin Kowalski, a school and community outreach specialist from Care Dimensions, delivered a one-hour presentation during the Glover staff meeting on developmental understandings of dying, death, and grief. The psychologists and counselors from other schools were invited and attended this presentation. The facts are shocking. By age 18, one out of 15 children will experience a death of a parent or sibling. So the question isn't, will this happen in our school? But when? It's likely that 70% of our teachers have a grieving student in their classroom at any given time. Little did we know that over a week later, March 13th, we had to close our school during the COVID pandemic that had reached our community. Since then, it's changed our way of life and the landscape of education. And sadly, to date, the pandemic has claimed the lives of over 450,000 people. With district's support and permission, Amanda has been allowed to offer Glover families a six-week virtual group this past fall that was co-coordinated with Care Dimensions. The purpose of the group was for our students to express their feelings and talk about their loss with others who have experienced a similar loss. The grief group allowed our students to release their emotions in a safe place. It was an excellent opportunity to partner with a community resource and to offer additional experience for Amanda to become a grief counselor. This grief counseling is now being discussed weekly at the mental health group that meets every Thursday. And this is comprised of all of the school counselors, the school psychologists, and social workers. They've expressed a desire to be able to expand this program now to the whole district and are hoping to be able to implement this program also. And that's what I want to place a commendation for, the hard work of Amanda in seeing an issue of this magnitude and then bringing a program in to help facilitate grief counseling with our students.
Wonderful, thank you, Brian. I know Amanda is a real asset to the Glover community, so she's always hard at work and on issues like this that really need the attention in the schools, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any commendations this evening? All right, quiet evening. That will lead us to our student representative, Dan Howell. Stan, are you with us?
Yep, hi.
Hi.
So there's a bit to talk about, so we recently just had our virtual club fair, which basically was a slide presentation that was put together detailing all of the different clubs at the high school. And also, it had contact information for that club's advisors. So hopefully, this will be a chance for particularly freshmen to get more engaged with the school community. You know, oftentimes, you'll realize, oh, I didn't even know that this was a club that existed. So having all of those in one place, I think will be good and positive for the students. The freshman Valentine's Day fundraiser is going on. Normally, they'll be selling candy and flowers in the cafeteria. But in another display of adaptability from students, the freshmen partnered with Stowaway Sweets and have created a list of select items, and 15% of each purchase on one of those items will go towards the freshman class. You're in Town, the musical, will be streaming tomorrow and Saturday at 7:00. So, a question that I've gotten a bit is, will it be available afterwards? And the answer to that is unfortunately, no. In the same way that we aren't allowed to record a live stage production, we can't really redistribute this afterwards for licensing issues. Myself and a couple other members of the cast, along with Mr. Scolio and Ms. Scaffington, have, are doing some presentations about the musical. We did one today with the 7th grade, and we'll be doing a couple more tomorrow to kind of detail what the musical is about and the technical challenges and things like that that we went through to make it all happen. And finally, the student council is holding a spirit week next week to celebrate the last week before vacation. So this is the most spirit weeks that we've ever had in a single year. But I think, I think we, you know, have, have earned it. As we all know, that getting through even one week in a time like this is an accomplishment, so. I think it makes sense. It's a, it's a safe way of getting together and being unified. And yeah, so this is, I think, our third this year, when we normally will only have one, but I think it's a it makes sense and is a positive positive thing for students.
Wonderful, Dan, thank you. And I've got my ticket for You're in Town for tomorrow evening. I'm very excited about that. And if anybody wants their ticket still, that they can go on to the school committee website, and which is Megan?
MHDSchoolCommittee.org.
Thank you. And there is a link right there. So, anybody who wants to pick those up.
Can I just wanted to ask Dan real quick? I got mine yesterday, and then I got them for my kids. And then it occurred to me, I looked up a little bit about the, about the play, and I actually saw that it was about municipal politics, which I thought was pretty hysterical. But is this appro, I'd gotten tickets for my younger kids. Is this appropriate for younger kids' standards? Do you think maybe we should skip that?
Um, it's definitely appropriate. There, there are some underlying themes of things like this. And, you know, the, you know, issues with preserving resources and things like that, because the whole idea is there's a water, water drought and yeah, so, so there, there are some, you know, underlying themes that I think a lot of the adults will pick up on and appreciate, but there's nothing you know, explicit or dirty.
The name had me a little nervous afterwards, but I'm excited.
Me too, at first. I, at first thought it was You're in Town. It is not.
Well, and as someone with high school musical experience, usually the ones that are adapted for high school stage are a little bit more friendly to all audiences, knowing that kids are going to be involved. Well, good luck, Dan, and I'm really looking forward to it.
I can't wait, thanks, Dan.
All right, that leads us to public comment. I think public comment is going to be a popular thing this evening, so I'm actually, because we've got such a hefty agenda, I've got a couple of things that I'm going to request for public comment. First, I would like to take public comment for all things not school name related. So anybody who wants to say anything pertaining to any, anything other than the school name, please keep your hand raised. And then after we get through those people, then I will ask for people to re-raise their hand and talk about the school or the rest, no, sorry, the school name. So I will also ask that when we do the school name, part of the public comment, that people keep their comments to about a minute long. We did have about 221 emails, I think, was what I was waiting through earlier today. So we have quite a bit of feedback. So if you already emailed us, we have received it. It is tallied, and I have it with us. And so if we, you know, if you don't need to speak, please don't. And if somebody says what you want to say, simply kind of giving that thumbs up on the Zoom would be great for us. All right, so I've got Catherine Martin up first.
Thanks, Sarah. So my public comment tonight, I was thinking about the village motto, and it's keep each other well. And I'm just thinking about how do we keep each other well right now when everybody's struggling? And how do we support our kids who are struggling and the parents who are struggling? And everyone's kind of mental health this winter after one year of pandemic. And I think it's time that we do start looking at the CDC and DESI guidelines at reducing our students spacing from six to three feet. And I think we try to work hard to get our kids back into more school time. And I don't even know if it's learning time, but it's time with peers. Conversely, how do we keep our teachers well? Because this equation involves them too. They are members of our community, and I don't think the short answer is you just reduce that number. I think we do this by instituting the DESI six-week pool testing program. And we follow the DESI guidelines for random testing. This is going to require community participation and hard work on part of our current nursing staff. And it's going to require a lot of transparency from our administration. I actually think this needs to continue beyond the six weeks, and we need to work out all the kinks, and I think that this needs to become part of our normal school activity, because we don't know if we are going to be in a similar situation next fall, and we want to do everything possible to make sure we can be in person next fall. The last way we can keep each other well is a well-funded budget. This year and previous year, school shortfalls all track back to the budget. No owl cameras, budget. Bad internet, budget. Engenuity, budget. We know we'll have a significant education and social-emotional gap next year. We need to fund it this year. This is how we keep each other well. This means sitting through the dry part of this meeting. This means attending the budget subcommittee meetings. This means you call your school committee members tomorrow, and you let them know your budget priorities. If they're not asking tough questions tonight, you ask them the tough questions tomorrow. The school committee alone controls the budget. At last year's budget hearing, only five to six people asked questions about in-person learning, technology, janitorial spending, and many other issues that we're facing at that time due to COVID. Our questions went unanswered by the chair, and we were called the vocal minority. Don't let that happen again this year. We fund next year now. And while we're all itching for a little normalcy and looking to, to the short term, we will be in the exact same place as we are next year if we do not fund our schools now. It is very important that people ask questions and demand our elected school committee members hold our superintendent's feet to the fire for a needs-based budget and our town accountable to fund our schools. This is how we keep each other well.
Thank you, Katie. Dawn Johns?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Just building on what Katie just said, I think we need to reduce the six feet to three feet. And I'm wondering, can this even happen? Can we renegotiate the teachers' union contract now? Is this possible? Everyone keeps talking about it, and no one seems to know this answer, so. Unless we can do that, then it's just, we shouldn't even talk about it anymore, because it's a done deal until the end of the year.
Thank you, Dawn.
Okay, thank you.
Emily Jewitt?
Hi, everyone. I'll keep it quick. I just want to echo my very grave concern about the mental health aspect of not only the physical pandemic that's going on, but the real mental health pandemic that is very closely associated with every aspect of this year, and how it's affecting our families, how it's affecting our children, our small businesses, our substance abuse users, children in the home with substance abuse users, families who can't work because their children are at home. And we don't have a support scaffolding that's even close to fitting the need. The six-month waiting list at the Marblehead Counseling Center is just one example. Our families are in trouble. Our town is in trouble. To mitigate these mental health issues, I do believe we need to give our kids the chance to get back into the school. I do think that spacing is something that needs to be closely looked at, especially since my son is participating in contact sports currently. There is no way there is a six-feet distance being maintained while playing basketball and pretty soon football. And I don't understand the disconnect between sports being okay, although I'm all for it, and being in a classroom is not. And I understand from speaking with teachers that vaccinations are really important to them, and I couldn't agree more. I want everyone to remain safe. How do we get them to the front of the line? I don't know. I don't know if that's something we can all raise our voices to help with. But in the meantime, we can't wait. The situation is dire. Our kids need our help. Our families need our help. The tone is palpable out there in our community. It's not frustration anymore. It's alarm bells going off left and right. I raised this issue to the Board of Health the other night, and I'm really hoping by raising it here tonight, that it will help move the needle. Because I'm just that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Kim Day?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, my video on Blink's face. I just wanted to speak to what a lot of parents have been raising as a concern in terms of getting our kids a little bit more normalcy in their life and more time in the school with their peers. And you know, there's a lot of really important topics and considerations that you have in front of you right now and in the coming weeks with the budget and pool testing and technology. And I just want to remind you that this Marblehead community is another resource. I mean, parents, look at how many people are on this call, 203. Parents are like waiting for you to tell us what we can do to get these kids back into school, right? So I just want you to remind, just as a reminder, as you're thinking through everything that's in front of you, that all of these big decisions that you're having to deal with, and you know, the hours upon hours that you are working diligently on all of these various issues, please reach out to the volunteer community. There are parents waiting to like be tapped. Do you need, you know, help backfilling for substitutes that you can't get into the schools? Do you need support in terms of more funding for the, you know, technology? Do you need help contact tracing if you decide to do pool testing? Just want you to keep that in your mind and to be well aware of how much this community wants to be able to step up and help. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Alexia Kearney?
Hi there, thank you for allowing me to speak. You know, I, I do believe that we're on a brink of a major mental health epidemic. And I just cannot be silent about this anymore. I've asked my son to speak. You can see, he's a junior at the high school. He's in a full remote program. And he's the reason why I've been involved over the past few days to really bring his voice to your school committee, to our community, so that we start talking about what we're extremely worried about with the kids in our district and in our community. Personally, I've just woken up to the impact that remote and hybrid learning has had on my children. You know, I've been really focused on the academics. I'm worried about SATs. I'm worried are my children learning math? You know, they don't have a lot of time in the classroom. They're in a hy, most of them are in a hybrid. My twins are. So that's where I have been focused, and I haven't really thought about the mental component and the health component of how this is impacting our community. I did a lot of research today. I know in 2014, there was a study by the National Research Council of Medicine that showed that already in 2014, 13 to 20% of the US kids are experiencing a mental, emotional, or behavioral disorder every year. That blew my mind. Several studies show that only 10 to 40% of the kids receive any treatment at all. This was prior to COVID. You know, I, I as a parent, I am, I'm here. I'm a short-order cook. I'm helping my children, helping them navigate their way through. We have family dinners. My son, Niall, has spoken to us several times, both my husband and myself, at dinner about his concerns when he logs on to his Zoom classes at the high school. He's worried about the kids. He's worried about what's going on. And you know, instead of now focusing on what my kids are doing, what they're learning in school, I'm starting to check in with them and say, are you okay? And oftentimes, there are tears, there's frustrations, there's, there's fear. The impact of the remote and the hybrid learning on our children is, is real. The impact of losing people that we love, our fears for, you know, those who may contract the virus is real. The fear with the teachers is real. You know, we have, we have a lot of concerns as a community, but my biggest concern right now, you know, unfortunately, in our family, we've received two phone calls from friends in New Hampshire and in California of children who have taken their lives. And I'm worried. I don't want anything to happen to people in our community. And I would be remiss if I did not speak up. You know, Niall has been bringing this up in conversations, bringing statistics to our dinner table. It's time for me to speak up. And I will turn it over to my son at one point, and you can hear what it has been like for a junior in a remote program. And he can, he also has a lot of friends who are in the hybrid, and I believe they also feel the same way. So thank you so much for listening to us.
Thank you, Alexia. Kristin Pratt, you're technically next, but I'm going to skip you to go to Niall, and then I'll come back to you.
Of course.
Thanks. Welcome, Niall.
How's it going? Thank you guys for having me on tonight.
Thank you.
So as my mom started off by speaking about what I've been going through and what I know countless of my friends have been going through, is the mental height, the mental health crisis that we're now facing. I myself have never had an issue with any sort of mental health ever in my life. And just recently, it's been very hard for me. And I know the exact same thing is happening to countless other students in Marblehead High School. No one is spending very much time with other people. And it is very challenging for all of us at the high school. I've been talking to all of my friends. They all feel the exact same way. The highs are not very high. The lows are very low. Just this week, I brought it up in one of my remote classes, and every single person they're on the call, their jaw dropped. Everyone feels the exact same way. Even the teacher on the call acknowledged that she feels the same way. Everyone's in the same boat. And this is something that the school is not taking care of. Every single month, one emotional check-in is the extent of mental health that they're taking care of at the high school. Something that's not mandatory and that students, three students a month go to and play games. We talked about it, and we said that it was kind of a check-off on a box. It felt, it feels that way to us, that the school's not doing anything to help us. Nothing at all. And I'm sick and tired of getting call after call about my friends having to cut down their friends at boarding school and at college. And I'm sick of it. And it needs to end, and action needs to be taken. Nothing's, the end is not really in sight. Students have nothing to look forward to. And the least we can do is to help our students fight mental health. It's way more important that your kid is living at the end of the day than if he's learning. It's way more important. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Niall. As a mental health counselor in this community, I completely agree. Kristin Pratt?
Sarah, I know we don't typically respond, but I just want to commend Niall for speaking up not only for himself, but for his peers. It took courage, and you spoke with empathy for others, and I just want to thank you for coming forward and speaking.
Absolutely. Kristin?
Sure, first, I just want to thank you for asking for comments to be held on the school name I dialed in last week in the hopes of kind of getting an update on some of the things I hope we get to tonight. And I'm glad that we're sort of jumping into jumping into this, because last week I was sort of left thinking like, you know, I have an opinion on the name. I fundraised for the school. I'm excited about it, but what does it matter if we can't get those kids in the school? And this week, I read an article in The Globe about all of the grassroots efforts that various communities across the state have done that have been successful to get pool testing in place, and ultimately to get the kids back in school. I mean, and one of those programs in Wellesley is now the basis of what the governor is putting into the state that hopefully will be trialing for six weeks. And it just, it leaves me up at night thinking about, you know, what is the help that we can bring? You know, I think there's been an increase in communication efforts, which I really do want to acknowledge, because it was clearly a gap, but we've got three different websites, a lot of emails that sometimes seem redundant, and at the end of the day, I'm just trying to get clarity on what is it that we as a community and we as parents can do? And, you know, how, you know, what are really the issues that we're facing? Is it funding? Is it tracing? Is it spacing? Is it, you know, what is it so that we can be pragmatic and, and help support you? Like, and I don't want to reiterate what Kim said, but a lot of what Kim said. You know, we've got a lot of cored parents that would probably happily volunteer if we knew that was the issue that would help cover the lunch hour to get the kids in-person day extended to full day. And just to kind of share, you know, in my family, we kept our children home from school today. It's hard. And I'm sorry, I'm following Niall, and it brought me very emotional, but it's taking a toll on everybody, and I am very fortunate, and I, my husband works part-time, and we have a lot of flexibility, but I can't imagine how hard this is for people that are single parents or both have two jobs. And we need to do something. We need to be transparent and work together to change what is happening. And I just, I really would like some, some clarity on what are the phases. There's all this, there's so much out there on social media and speculation, and I guess I'm just looking at this group of people to be more clear about this is what the issues are, this is what we're facing, and this is what we can do to help, because I think we've all sort of hit a collective wall of realizing that, you know, if it's fundraising, we'll help. If it's volunteering, we'll help. But we need some direction, and we need some transparency. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Michelle Gottlieb? Michelle Gottlieb?
Sorry.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
For those of you that don't know, I'm on the Board of Health and this is not our forum for, for speaking or commenting on policies, et cetera. But I did want to say just a couple of things. One is that, you know, for those of you who were at our Board of Health meeting, you know, we are listening and hearing what you're saying. And we know that, as I said the other night, that, you know, as the pandemic wears on, things shift. Things change over time and we are always recalculating and rethinking. Not only based on the latest science, but based on where we are as a community, as a society. And this isn't the forum for us to, for me to comment, but, but we do. Mental health is part of the purview of what, of what the Board of Health addresses and we take this very seriously. And, but we also, you know, are concerned about the spread of the virus and we just, we just have a lot of thinking to do. But we are listening and we are listening to the anguish that we too, as community members are, are experiencing. So we just want you to know that we are, we are not taking this lightly and we are thinking and listening and reading and considering everything that's, that's being shared here on social media. And, and we're considering and following. Not that these are the decisions that are made by the Board of Health, but of course we serve in an advisory capacity. Just regarding the two other things I wanted to say, one is about volunteering. When it comes to anything that has to do with regard to contact tracing or people who want to get involved in vaccinations or, you know, it's been really hard because we want to take advantage of people who want to volunteer in any of the kind of health aspects. And right now we don't have a lot of opportunities, but should opportunities come our way, the best way that you as a community can be ready to volunteer is to be signed up through the Medical Reserve Corps. That link I put on our Facebook page for the, that it's on the town website and it is also on our Facebook page for the Board of Health. I will repost it there and I will make sure that it is easily accessible also on our town of, the Marblehead Health page as well. So even if you've already been corried, if you want to participate in any kind of Board of Health volunteering aspect, please make sure you're registered there as that will be the way we can tap people. And yeah, I don't need to make my other comment. That's all. But thank you for sharing your thoughts and concerns.
Thank you, Michelle. We'll probably reach out afterwards and just make sure that we have all the links on that because we could put them on some of our websites as well. Thank you. Erin Noonan.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly thank Michelle for coming to this meeting and I know that they all take their, their role very seriously and it just shows the community spirit that we don't operate in like a vacuum. And our boards listen and come together and we work together as a town and a community. And I just think it's amazing that people showed up to speak today because it's hard and it takes a lot of bravery. This is a hard time. People are walking around like shells of themselves. We are, there are families with real financial insecurity. And clearly, students are suffering. There's a lot of tears. It just, you know, six months into this school year now with three and a half left to go, it just feels like it's the time to take a step forward. If you think about like our risk analysis as a pendulum, as we approach this year, you know, we've rightly approached this year with extreme conservatism. But it just feeling like a little bit in the community that the pendulum has swung so far to the left that we've like wrapped it around the tree three times. And maybe it's time to take that step forward. And maybe we can be leaders among other, other towns, other towns in our area and not wait and be followers. I have faith that we can do that. I have faith in our administration. I have faith in the school committee and I know our, and you know, I think important part of that is having teachers in the room. And I'm not sure that we've done that justice. I don't, I don't know. It doesn't seem to me there's like, I mean, Joan Miller is, is the union leader and by all accounts has an incredible reputation. And I just doesn't mean any, anything towards that, but just that there's a lot of voices that I think aren't being necessarily heard that, you know, we, you know, this is, we have to start listening to people. You know, this whole mental health thing has become its own epidemic. You know, and so what does it mean to take a step forward? I mean, part of that, for me, I just don't see how you can get to that if you don't relax some of the social distancing. And you know, maybe it's time that we start to, you know, pivot and take a look at the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations, the World Health Organization's, the Masters of Public Health Organization. Because at this point we are measuring real actual harm in terms of mental health against hypothetical harm. Right? And you know, part of that also, you know, that's just not, it's just not one step. You know, part of that means we need to show support for whatever testing that as a community, we need to voluntarily opt in. Parents in this community, if we do pool testing, are, you know, need to show good faith and goodwill and participate in this, in this process. You know, maybe we need to start getting some PCP testing or whatever it is that long testing and the rapid testing. We have money for that. We have, I don't even, I mean, we have an ESAR grant coming, $335,000 of cares, a second round of cares funding. We have $200,000 sitting in an appropriations line for substitutes we haven't used. Let's get, let's, let's figure out what it is the teachers will, will, will need to feel safe. And let's start to engage the community and let's stop maybe thinking of all the reasons we can't do something. Because logistically it is incredibly overwhelming, some of this contact tracing, pool testing, all of it. But maybe let's have the audacity to hope, to borrow a phrase. Let's try to manifest something here and just take that first step forward.
Thank you, Erin. All right. Thank you, everyone. All, all of these comments are, are, you know, received with, with heavy hearts and, and you know, we, we're, we understand where you're coming from. So that, these things will be addressed a little bit later on in the meeting. And so just to continue forward with the public comment part, I will ask people who want to weigh in on the school name to now raise their hands.
Sarah, there's been a woman who's physically been holding her hand up in the screen. Her name was Virginia Brown. I don't, I don't know if everybody knows where the raise hand function is, but I just wanted to give her, she's been very polite and held it up for a while.
Thank you, Sarah. Virginia, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Thank you so much, Sarah. I'm sitting here asking my, how do you raise your hand in class on the Zoom? Raise it. So anyway, I apologize about that, but thank you for your acknowledgement. So I have to say, I have to step back and say for a minute that I feel like maybe I should have been more involved all along. And so I apologize for that piece. But I just want to reiterate what everyone's been saying here tonight. I have an eighth grader here in the Marblehead Public Schools. I also have a seventh grader and at Brooks, I mean, a seventeen-year-old at Brooks. And I just wanted to share with you very briefly an experience because my son seems to be, have done okay with it, but because they're only in school half days, he really doesn't know his teachers. It's very difficult to develop a rapport in the, in the, in the environment that we're currently all working under. My student, my student was a B plus, B minus student throughout the first quarter, throughout the sixth grade year here. We're kind of newer to Marblehead. And this Saturday morning I opened up his report card and his report card was across the board, D's and D minuses. I never got an email. I never got any correspondence. And I'm sharing this only because for an eighth grader, you have to, I mean, and obviously we all do understand that it's truly a mental health issue at this point. I mean, that his self-esteem, obviously he just shut down. And I feel like the teachers at, on some level possibly it's happening too. It, it's nobody's fault. I take a hundred percent accountability for this issue. I'm obviously holding my son responsibility, responsible too. And I know the teachers are working very hard to provide these communications, but without knowing a kid who typically would not be getting D's and D minuses across the board. And not being able to, to kind of proactively support a child like that. These are the type of things we're dealing with. And quite honestly, like I just, and I want to be as helpful and supportive and collaborative as possible. I've always worked in education public. And I have experience with both public and private experiences. So whatever I can do, I want to be 100% supportive and helpful. I, I feel remorse that I haven't been more involved and so I apologize about that. But we have to do something because I really feel, and I've talked to many, many districts in Massachusetts. I have family throughout Massachusetts. And they're at least going full days. So the teachers are at least having contact with their students for like, you know, two full days. And most of them are, many of them have plans that are moving in a direction where we get our kids back in school. But for a kid like mine, he has to be in school. I, I mean, it just, and I'm a public, I, I was an elementary principal. I was a director of special services in Connecticut for many, many years. I support public education 100%. But this right now is not working for him. Yet we asked for recommendations for his school for next year. And quite frankly, I felt kind of bad asking the teachers for it because I don't know that the teachers know him well enough to give him a recommendation. And that's not a fault of theirs. It's the contact time, the amount of instruction they're having to do in this new format and the amount of kids they're seeing every day are, you know, eight hours a week or, you know, two hours a week or whatever it might be. So anyway, I just, I, you know, I just wanted to reiterate what Niles had said. It is truly a mental health issue for these kids. For a kid to come home once semester with Bs and B pluses and feel successful in school to D's and D minuses across the board. I, I opened the report card, I was shocked. So I, I mean, that is for an eighth grader, a self-esteem issue. I, I, you know, I'm concerned. I'm really, really concerned. And I want to be helpful and I want to be supportive and I want to be collaborative. So I, again, I apologize for being new to coming to this. And I feel badly I hadn't, I hadn't been more involved prior, but I just wanted to share that with you because these are like real things that are happening in our community. And you know, that, that, it wasn't okay. Thank you so much for listening to me and thank you, Sarah, for acknowledging me.
Thank you, Jenny. All right.
Can I just say one other thing? I have to say, the school, the school board, the superintendent, the principal have been extremely receptive and supportive to my concerns. So I just wanted to add that too. So.
Thanks.
I feel supportive.
Thank you. All right. I've got, now we're going to switch gears over to the school name for a little while. And so I will reiterate that we're going to keep this to a minute. And if someone has already made their comments, then please just give a thumbs up and we will know that, that you're with them. All right. Henry Turner.
I thank you very much, Henry Turner. I live at 18 Taff Street. I speak to you in support of naming the new school, the Lucretia and Joseph Brown Elementary School. Because representation matters. My family has lived in Marblehead for the past 11 years and we love it here. We love the close knit community. We love our proud history and we love our schools. As a long time, as a longtime history teacher and now high school administrator, I could not be happier about our daughter's experiences at Gary Coffin and now Village Schools. At the same time, when we, when my family walks around town, we are well aware that we are one of the few multiracial families in town. And that my daughter and I are one of the few people of color in town. We also know that Marblehead is not immune to racism. It was just last year that my daughter observed the N word written at the Coffin School Playground. The well documented trauma that implicit bias, systemic racism and microaggressions have on students of color is a national crisis. Although small in number, Marblehead has a long history of people of color living in this community. It is true that the Browns are honored in many ways in this town. And we have a lot of work to do in this community to address racism. But with this new school, we have an opportunity to demonstrate during Black History Month in this historic town, that black, that black history is American history. I've had the opportunity to work with school systems throughout our country around issues of racial justice and equity. During this work, I too often hear worries of women and people of color being ignored or told that it's not their time. All of the finalists are worthy names for a new school. But by choosing that the name of the, choosing the name of the new school after Lucretia and Joseph Brown, we have an opportunity to say loud and proud that representation matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Jonathan Letterman.
Hi, thanks for, I wanted to make a couple of comments. The, the previous speakers who spoke prior to the naming discussion really highlighted the problem. There's a real lack of transparency from the school committee and as a consequence, there is now a real lack of trust from the broader Marblehead community about so many decision-making processes which seem increasingly opaque. COVID has made this much worse. A large part of this stems from the school committee's almost total lack of willingness to directly engage with the public during the public participation portion of these meetings. I can't understand why you rarely answer questions posed by the public. It has never been this bad. Why aren't the school committee packets posted so the public can see them before in advance so that they have the opportunities to comment on agenda items? Why don't you answer the questions? Why are school committees in the past answered questions from the public? We are all your constituents. This is the first time in more than 50 years that a Marblehead school is potentially being renamed after an individual. The idea that each member of the school committee has a personal preference and that somehow this decision will potentially be made by three members, most of whom don't have deep roots in the community, is just wrong at many levels. Your job is to hire the superintendent, make policy and balance the budget. While you certainly can pick the name of the new school using tallies of emails, that process is wrong. The taxpayers and citizens of Marblehead paid for the school and have been paying for the schools here for generations. The idea that email solicitations to individual committee members, again, using a tally or online surveys, should be guiding these decisions is just undemocratic and is not keeping with the democratic ideals we should all be proud of. Every citizen of Marblehead should be able to have a voice. Marblehead is blessed with countless individuals with extensive knowledge of our important historical figures, including those whose namesakes have been proposed. And this is a time to bring representative experts forward to offer a small diverse set of recommendations so that the entire community can be invested in this decision. I hope you will seriously consider taking a step back, putting a proper experienced naming committee together and then putting the final decision on the town ballot in June. We have an annual election every year in June and the name of the school could at no cost be put to all of the voters on this ballot. This is not a decision you should be making on your own. I hope you will seriously consider engaging the public in a meaningful way so that the entire community can be vested in the final decision. The schools belong to all of us and all of us should have a voice in its naming. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Lloyd.
Hi. I'm Melanie Lloyd of 26 Arthur Avenue. I'm reading a statement from the Marblehead Racial Justice Team where I'm a part of the school's action team. The Marblehead Racial Justice Team supports your naming our new building, the Lucretia and Joseph Brown School. This would be a wonderful step forward for our town and a huge honor for people of color in our town's history. It would also be a courageous, bold action toward realization of inclusive history in our town. This couple faced tremendous odds and discriminations as people of color in colonial times. They overcame impediments to thrive as successful businesspeople and entrepreneurs, along with raising a daughter they adopted. Elbridge Gary, Joseph Story and Malcolm Bell are all meaningful figures in the history of our town and its schools. We hope that each of them, along with Ms. Lizzie Coffin, can be represented in memorable ways in the new school. An anchor as representative of a firm foundation is also good. And we hope the administration can weave that idea into the fabric of the school as well. Your choosing Lucretia and Joseph Brown is vital in so many ways. It would recognize a couple who may have been ordinary people but whose accomplishments live in our town 200-plus years later. It would recognize them as a couple, a key message about the value of female and male contributions to accomplishments. In this vein, town leaders recently voted to recognize a contemporary couple, Judy and Jean Jacoby, both of whom contributed to our collective well-being in the renaming of 10 Humphrey Street. You now have an opportunity to reinforce that message. Finally, it's important as well from the standpoint of a gesture to present Marblehead as a welcoming place for people of color. Numerous commentators have described how valuable it is to introduce age-appropriate, anti-racist education at the elementary level. Naming the new building after Lucretia and Joseph Brown aids our town's advancement in regard to an honor lasting generations about people of color. Please vote to name the building, the Lucretia and Joseph Brown School. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Melanie. Uh, Sheri.
Hi, um, to all that are making the decision to name the new elementary school. My name is Sheri Gagnon and I'm a resident of Marblehead. I'm a Native American indigenous person. I am Mati, Mohawk, Abenaki, Algonquin and Choctaw. It's my understanding that one of the options for naming the school would be to name it the Lucretia and Joseph Brown Elementary School. Though I'm not Wampanoag myself, many of my friends are Wampanoag. I believe that they would be so very proud, though I am not qualified to speak on their behalf, that this was even a consideration for a name for the school, seeing as Joseph Brown was Wampanoag. I myself, as an individual native to this country and as a resident of Marblehead, would be really honored and proud to know that this school would be named after such an important figure in Marblehead history and a native hero. It's so important that we as a community celebrate the accurate history of our community and its original inhabitants and their contributions to our community. Thank you for your time and consideration of honoring a true hero, a native person of color and his wife by naming the new elementary school after this couple that has unfortunately not been honored the way they should have been honored all along in this town. We have a number of persons of color and students in this town and we need to honor the diversity that we do have in this town. Though so little in percentage, and this naming would be a nice start. I thank you personally.
Thank you, Sheri. And then Cindy Tower-Lowen. You gotta unmute yourself. There you go.
I will try to keep it more than one minute and less than three minutes.
That's fair. I'm starting your clock now.
Okay, no. Anyway. Many of you know who I am. I am an active member of the community. I work on racial justice work. I believe in justice and equity and changing the narrative in Marblehead. My vote would be for Lucretia and Joseph Brown Elementary School. My vote doesn't matter. It's your vote that does. But these are the reasons why I think it's important. Marblehead has not been a welcoming town. It has a history of being a sundown town. Though many would say they have been welcomed here and they love this town, there has been enough racial profiling with residents, students, non-residents, which show a different picture. This name would be a first step in changing that image. No, it will not happen overnight. Yet, it is an incredible opportunity to have this as our first step with our elementary students, the young ones, the ones that are still absorbing their environment, their history and so much more. Imagine having a town that embraces a new narrative, a learning opportunity for the young students and for the adults. Our white, black and brown students would learn about the Browns just by the nature of being in this school with this name. The learning would not and should not stop here. The Browns were property owners, hardworking. They owned and operated the tavern that some know as Black Joe's Tavern. Lucretia was a baker. She created the jog, Joe Frogger, Frogger Cookie, sorry. Lucretia was black. And she was free. Joseph was black and he was indigenous. And he was enslaved. Until he obtained his freedom from slavery after his service to this country. The stories would be woven into the curriculum and taught to our children. Whether white, black or brown, at a very early age, our children, our students would be part of changing the narrative here. That blackness is a good thing. That we honor it, that we respect it, we embrace it and we elevate it. Our students from Boston would be able to see people that look like them in the school. And the knowledge that this couple was and is a part of our town and our history. When is the last time the school district, the town elevated a black woman? A black and indigenous man that lived here, that were part of this community? That's part of our history for over 200 years and yet here we are 200 years later. And we're having a meeting and we're talking about naming the school. You, the school committee, can change that tonight here. And you can take this first step. And then commit and make a commitment to our students that we will continue on this path of honoring our black and indigenous people, of creating a new narrative here, of elevating and making the person not quote, "a black person," but part of who we are here in Marblehead and our history. And I thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Leah Boekenkamp.
Hi, yeah, thank you. Um, I'd like to voice my support also for the name Joseph and Lucretia Brown. And I'd like to, I'd like to go a little bit deeper than that. There's been a lot of conversation on Facebook that has, that, that I think this name has brought up and that has, that it's, it's spurred on a lot of conversation. And I think that's really important to not lose sight of because I think it's more important than the actual name of the school. Um, a lot of the points that Cindy made, I, I agree with. And I feel really strongly that along with the name comes the commitment to engage in a lot of education, not only about the educate, the um, history in Marblehead, although that needs to be addressed, to be more inclusive and accurate. Um, I also think we need system-wide some education on systemic racism, on implicit bias. And as a majority, I mean hugely white community, we have to do that work as white people. We have to do that work, both for adults and for our children. And I really feel strongly that that is the only way that this town is going to be a more welcoming town. I think the the downfall of Marblehead, I, I love it here. I've lived here for, I don't even know how long, since 2003, a long time, I'll lose track. But the the low point for me is the lack of diversity. And I really, really think that it's important to do that hard work, to have these hard conversations um, across the board, in the schools, yes, but also outside of that. And that's not, I, I get that's not the point of tonight's conversation. So I am hopeful that you do choose to name this school after Joseph and Lucretia Brown. And I, if I could insist, I would, that that comes along with a commitment to do that hard work and have those conversations and make the effort for some more substantial change that will be longer lasting. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Um, we've got two more people with their hands up. I will just ask people to keep it brief since we are starting to run a little long and we've got a big agenda to get through. So Natalie Bellew.
Hi, everybody. Wow. So as far as names are concerned, um, my children, uh, all three of them, the youngest being 27 now, um, attended the Malcolm Bell School. And I just, as a teacher who's taught American history as well as world history, um, just want to shed a little bit of light on as far as Marblehead is concerned and what perhaps we might consider. When we drive into Marblehead, it says, "Welcome to Marblehead, the birthplace of the American Navy." And one of the things that we don't talk about, and most people don't know, that we were also the birthplace of the first slave ship called Desire. It's this very, very small piece of information that's in the archives at, um, and at the Historical Society and Museum. But the reason why we had the ship, the ship was made here. Um, and the issues that were arising at the time were that, um, the, the First Nation indigenous individuals that were living here just weren't working out so well. The, those individuals knew the lay of the land. And what we ended up doing was building a slave ship for some of the indigenous individuals to be exported as human cargo to the West Indies. But once in the West Indies, we would bring back African, African indigenous individuals to New England. And the, when the ship sailed, it sailed, sailed out of Salem, but it originated in Marblehead. I think it's really important to know that because sometimes towns give partial history and we have that single story. And I think it's really important just to be able to consider, like, all right. I wasn't, to tell you the truth, I, I wasn't even thinking about Brown as a school. I was thinking my loyalty is to Bell because my kids went there. But when you think about the importance of a name or the absence of a name or the absence of a situation or an absence of history, I think it's really important for us to bring the whole equation into it as far as what we acknowledge and what we know. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. All right, that actually brings us to the end. So, uh, thank you everyone for your comments. They are certainly going to be taken into account this evening. All right, so that brings us to the minutes. Uh, we had two sets of minutes. I think one of them was a smidgen late, so if, um, is, is everybody ready to vote on these two tonight before I ask for the motion?
Um, Sarah, I did notice that in the January 21st minutes, there was large portions that were missing. Um, like in, in where it said vote, like the actual, the way we voted wasn't noted. And so I don't know if maybe we want to skip those and.
Sure. Yeah, I know Lisa had said that there was something that she was trying to get back to on that one. Um, I was under the, something that she had, so we can absolutely, um, put that one on next time.
Okay.
All right, so I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes from 12:17, 2020.
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
David second. Any additions to those? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor.
Yes.
David Harris.
Yes.
Emily Barron.
Yes.
And Sarah Fox.
Yes.
All right, those pass and we will look at 121 and get that back on for next time. Okay, that heads us to John's superintendent report. And first up is going to be Principal Bauer with the Marblehead High School Program of Studies for 2021, 2022. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you and thank you for having me. And I just wanted to thank Nile for his, um, his impassioned discussion and points. And he's a wonderful young man and, and really enjoy working with him. So it took a lot of courage to say that in front of 200 something people and, um, thank you very much, Nile. Excuse me. I just also want to thank our awesome staff. We're doing the best that we can through challenging situations. And certainly we're coming to a point in the year where we need to start planning for next year, as crazy as that sounds. Uh, we're getting ready to start the course selection process. And the big piece of that is aligning our program of studies to make sure that it matches, uh, for next year's programming. So it's important tonight to, uh, go through the, uh, the nine proposed items with you. And I think the big piece is working with the administrative team and our staff is looking for creating as much flexibility through challenging times and making sure that we still provide, uh, the great programming that we do. The first, there are two items in science. The first item is in the science area with the additional lab block. Um, we did not run that this year because we needed to create flexibility and agility within our schedule to offer options. Um, so we're going to propose to do that again next year to keep the same, uh, theme in mind. So that allows more opportunities for scheduling, balancing the schedule. Um, and we're moving forward with that piece. Number two, the second component within science is we are looking to extend our engineering course, which is currently a semester course, move that to become a full year course that will provide more options for our students, aligns with, with college majors uh, and student interest as well. And we're going to move that to the college prep one level. So I'm not sure how you want me to, to proceed, if you'd like me to stop at each subject for any questions you may have, or just go through the entire presentation.
I think you can go through the entire presentation.
Great, thank you so much. The second subject that we're working with is the world of English. And this is an interesting piece here. So our AP Literature course, which is run in grade 12, and our AP Language course that is running grade 11, uh, is in a sequence. So the proposal came to me that we should create more flexibility within our scheduling and offerings for our students just because of the demands of the courses and matching up with student needs and desires to be able to offer, uh, either course in either year of grade 11 or grade 12. So we're very excited about this opportunity and, and other schools have done this. It's just a great way again to provide flexibility for our students to select in grade 11 or 12, whether it's AP Literature or AP Language. So we're very excited about that. The second piece in English is something that we've been discussing for a while. And that is looking for equity and inclusion within our, our programming. Um, and we are going to eliminate the CP2 track of English, uh, next year for grades nine, 10, 11 and 12 through the general education track. Um, we've discussed this with the teachers that teach that. And I think the big piece of that is our co-teaching programming that, that has been developed that allows additional supports that work with our students. And we're very excited about this opportunity too, because it's certainly one that will allow students more opportunities. Um, and we would just have the levels of college prep honors and AP in English for next year. In the world of visual arts, uh, there are two changes. One is a simple name change. Currently we have a portfolio one and a portfolio two, uh, semester course that leads into, uh, Art Studio Four. So as you know, we have a tremendous history in our, um, visual art department does a wonderful job. And, and certainly it's been challenging, uh, with electives and enrollment. And they're really doing a great job and looking for ways to streamline and keep promoting their, uh, programming of getting to the, uh, portfolio piece. So the change would be from Portfolio One, Portfolio Two to Art Studio Three, which would match Art Studio Four to give students an idea of the, um, the alignment vertically of the naming. So that's important to us. We'd run a spring, a spring offering of that and a fall offering. The second piece is to eliminate the Creative Expressions course. There are many options at the beginning level, um, and being able to eliminate that, which really didn't run last year, would allow more opportunities for the other, uh, entry level electives we have in visual arts. Very exciting for Performing Arts, there are two changes. Uh, number one is to, um, a new course, Music Technology and Electronic Music. Now, the one thing that has come out of COVID is our students have been enormously, as well as our teachers, creative with programming and being able to, as they've worked remotely and put together those awesome performances that they shared around the holidays. So it's spurred a lot of interest in this. And Andrew Scully, our lead performing arts teacher and Kevin Godu, our, our band and jazz band teacher have collaborated here and worked with, actually our new tech director, right, as he began, in terms of the, the programming and computer software that would be necessary to support this course. The second change, um, for Performing Arts would be a simple name change. We have Piano Lab and we have an advanced level. So we're looking to actually align and create a beginning piano level and advanced level. And we think that delineation will help, uh, for the understanding of the electives. And then our last piece that we have is in Special Education. And Dr. Donnelly, our Special Education Chair at the high school and working with Eric Oxford, our Director of Student Services, and Gillian Bradbear, our lead, uh, Special Education Teacher. A lot of work has been done to refocus our curriculum support courses, uh, to be able to allow a credit to be connected with the course, which will help all of our students. So that that way we're not scrambling for some situations at the end of their high school experience to find credits that they may need. And I know Dr. Donnelly is tuned in and I asked if she would speak on this. Dr. Donnelly, are you available?
Yes, I'm here.
Great, thank you, Dr. Donnelly.
Sure. So as Principal Bauer said, in short, the rationale for this is, you know, a little bit multi-layered. But we did find that students were, to students that receive special education services through curriculum support were coming up short as they approached graduation in terms of. Were coming up short as they approached graduation in terms of credits. Um, and it truly is a course that they take to, you know, learn the skills that they need in order to make effective progress in the curriculum. Um, but we did some research and found that other local schools are offering credit for this course. Um, as it, you know, as it should be, it is work that they're doing. Another piece to the change that we're making is to try to embed more of a. Um, developmentally appropriate executive functioning curriculum along. You know, to follow students starting in freshman year, if that's where they're, if that's where we're receiving them. And follow them through so that they're working on executive functioning skills, organization, organization, study skills. And developing more independence and self-advocacy as they as they grow older.
Thank you, Dr. Donnelly. Appreciate your efforts. So that is uh that is the um the presentation.
Right.
Suggests changes.
All right, thank you, Dan. Um.
With the permission of the Chair, ma'am?
Absolutely.
I just want to say, as somebody that's done program of study work for two decades, I'm very impressed with uh Principal Bauer and his team. And any changes to the program of study elicit questions and concerns in the research and the backwork that they did. For these are all based soundly in educational practice, and so um I fully support what he's putting forward for the high school.
Great. Um, Dan, I I really like the curriculum support piece. Um, Dr. Donnelly, I appreciate that. That that you highlighted the um executive function piece. I think one of my biggest concerns. I watch, I have a middle schooler, um, as I watched the middle school over these past couple of years with um. COVID and everything that's interrupted their educational. Um, life uh is that these executive function, these kind of soft skills that we that we build, especially at middle school to ready them for high school. I think we're going to have a a real problem with that. Um, and so I'm glad to see that that's that's you guys have plans for that.
Yeah. Um, hi, Dan. Thanks for presenting us this to us. Um, just two quick things. One is um. I really appreciate the CPT CP two move um and the co-teaching model. I think, you know, you know, I'm a big supporter of the co-teaching model. I. Um, am very happy to see, you know, a start to shift to that more inclusive model. I would ask um maybe that you could come back and talk to us again about how you see those classrooms working. Um, and with the hope to potentially continue to expand that model. Um, the the question I have is, can you just talk through the um lab piece within the science curriculum?
Sure, absolutely. Um, so at at this time, we we instituted this year. We eliminated the extra blocks, so typically our classes, they all run three cycles out of the four days. Our labs, our science classes were running. Four blocks out of the uh four days, actually, so they they jumbled it on to that. Um, and obviously, with with what is needed with the flexibility for the schedule and being able to uh align all of our other courses uh that proved very helpful, so. Uh, we will be working with our science team and our science department because they've made adjustments this year in terms of the curriculum. The labs are still running. The labs have been running. I've actually was in a potential energy lab uh a couple of weeks ago. And um we we implemented this year some virtual labs that make it easy, or starting to move towards more of the hands-on labs, so they're still running. Um, and adjustments have been made and and still will be made, so there will be work that will be focused with our science department within. Uh, the courses to make sure they have what they need to make those adjustments. So it's it'll be ongoing work as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah?
I had questions on two of these. Um, for the visual arts. Uh, program that we're removing, do you feel in any way that the limited enrollment may have been because of the situation we're in this year? Or did you see this downward trend already occurring?
So it's been, it's been occurring, and it was occurring when I arrived, actually, and it's been ongoing. Uh, we're working to create solutions. Uh, we need, we need to work on this, and it's an area of emphasis. That's part of the reason we brought in elective day to stimulate interest. But we offer lots of different electives, and they're they're competing, so there's there's work that we need to do in terms of our requirements that we will be doing. Through this year to make sure that um that matches up for the demand, but also for in terms of enrollment into those courses, so. Yes, there's been a steady decline, uh, but it's it's basically when they removed uh before I arrived, they made a shift with the uh. The arts requirement uh from a two-year to a one-year, so. Uh, we'll look to, again, uh, put together a committee work on that this year to to reexamine that moving forward, but it is a lot of work, and you need to make sure that. With a lot of moving pieces, it has to be a coordinated effort.
Okay, and then my next question um talks about the curriculum support class, but more precisely what Dr. Donnelly spoke about. Um, how the implementing that um executive function piece in education. Um, my question kind of surrounds, you know, I've often heard Matt Fox say he's has three hundred and sixty days to take an elementary school student and make them a high school student. Um, which is a a tough fee, and then you cut that down to, you know, I don't have the exact math, but. With what we had last spring and this year, we're looking at, you know, maybe a hundred and seventy, maybe a hundred and fifty, maybe a hundred and eighty, but a a lot less. Um, and I worry that it's really that piece that that some of these students may have lost. So is there a potential? For that, that, I don't know if it's a full curriculum support piece, or if it's just kind of. The executive functioning cla- piece to be available to incoming ninth graders next year, because I I really worry about that class. Getting left behind in that skill set.
Well, I can speak in in general, and and Dr. Donnelly can speak a little bit more specific with the executive functioning, but. One thing that is on our radar is the transition, and we want all of our students, that first year is critical. There's no question about that. A good start at the high school. In grade nine will more than likely uh be successful for years. So in in terms of uh the English piece, without going in too much detail, you know, looking at where we position our co-teaching teams. That might be more of a year that we put an extra co-taught team there to help spread that out amongst that level. Um, and I know that there will be more discussions in terms of how we can make sure that the students, when they arrive, it's our job to. Teach them and to bring them to where they need to be. We need to meet them where they are. Um, so that'll be a lot of our discussion as we transition into next year as well, so, and I don't know if Dr. Donnelly wants to add anything on the executive functioning piece.
Yeah, I think certainly one of the challenges that I found in my relatively short time here is that. We do find that there are a lot of students that are referred because they do lack those executive functioning skills, or they have legitimate executive functioning. Deficits um and disabilities in that area. So. I think one of the the constant tightrope that we feel that we're walking is. Trying to balance providing students with this level of specialized instruction while also ensuring that we're not. Closing off their schedule to allow them the opportunities in all of those electives for kids to have a chance to find their passion. Um, and to find something, you know, we've talked so much about engagement this year, to find something that really helps engage students in school. Um, so I think it's a point really well taken that there are going to be some skill deficits that all students are going to have. Um, so my hope is that with the, you know, with being able to reinstall co-teaching at the, you know, hopefully the baseline level that we hope to have it this year. Um, that the special education teachers that are working in the general education setting can bring some of those executive functioning. Skills and strategies into, you know, all students into those classrooms um without having to, you know, hopefully have to remove, you know, just in the. Structures that we have now have students lose the opportunities to take electives for some of those things that we want to provide to everybody.
So it almost becomes like a tier one support.
I would love for it to be.
So would I.
You know, I'm more in the tier three and tier two-ish realm, but yeah, I would love for, I would love to see executive functioning um be a tier one support, K to twelve.
Absolutely, I agree.
You have my support.
Um. Yeah, you're muted.
Do you mind if I just follow on from that real quick? Because um I was going to mention this later on in the meeting, but since it's come up. Um, as the CPAC liaison, I sat on the recent CPAC um district meeting or board meeting, I'm not sure what it's called. But Dan and Dr. Donnelly um and Eric presented some of these changes to the CPAC board. Um, you know, specifically thinking around the co-teaching and the curriculum support piece. Um, so that, you know, is a key piece, being a former CPAC member, you know, to create that collaboration. Between the parents and the, you know, the CPAC members and the school. I mean, that um I think speaks volumes to the dedication here. And the kind of breadth of research that's gone into some of these changes. So I was just really happy to see that level of collaboration.
Yeah, that's great. I appreciate that, guys. Um, so I will ask for a motion um to accept uh Principal Bauer's Marblehead High School Program of Studies. Changes for twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two school year.
So moved.
Sarah Fox moved.
Second.
Megan second. All right, um, Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Uh, David Harris?
Yes.
Uh, Sarah Fox?
Yes.
And Emily Barron?
Yes.
All right.
Thanks, Dan.
Zero, thank you very much, Dan, and thank you, Dr. Donnelly. Okay, so that brings us up to our pool testing discussion. Um, I will ask our lead nurse, Deanna McMahon. And um the other high school nurse, um Megan, and I'm going to blank on her last name, I apologize for that. Uh, you guys can unmute yourself, and Dr. Bucky, do you want to share your screen for that?
With the permission of the Chair, I'd just like to give a brief introduction. Um, pool testing uh was announced by the governor before the Department of Elementary and Secondary had got it out to schools. I got it out to school committee the minute I was made aware. My phone rang probably ten minutes later. With the school committee member saying, this is probably not a good program for us, based on experience with somebody else in another district. I hung up from that call. I had an email from another school committee member saying, I really hope you're looking into this. So what we had opinions have changed over time. As people learn more about it, it becomes more attractive or less attractive. And so I thought that it would be important for the committee to have a presentation on specifically what the program is. What it looks like. We have proceeded in Marblehead as though we are doing it. So we have put ourselves in the queue, we have done the readiness checklist, we have become a BioNext Now uh district, so. I figured it was easier to ask forgiveness and say, yeah, we aren't interested than to ask permission. Oh, we didn't say we were interested. But now we would like to jump in, so we're in the queue for this. But in order for us to do it, we're going to have to hire a nurse. And school committees hire nurses, and so I thought it was important for you to get an overview from people who are much better versed in this. And Deanna is our lead nurse, and you've heard me praise her um repeatedly, and I will continue to do that. And her assistant in the office has really run, or not her assistant in the office, the second nurse at the high school. That was really a misspeak on my part, so I apologize. Um, has done yeoman's work in making sure all the boxes were checked in the readiness. Um, so I will turn it over to them, take you through the presentation, and then entertain the discussion uh that will likely follow.
So people know it's Megan Calpin, Megan.
Yes.
Doing the presentation.
Thank you, Deanna. Sorry, Megan.
That's okay.
Sometimes I barely remember my own last name, if it helps you feel any better.
It's a, it's been a week. Um, so I have, like they said, I'm Megan Calpin, I'm one of the nurses at um the high school. I have attended um Desi's pool testing webinars, and I've been working on the paperwork to kind of get this whole thing started. Um, so I put together some just brief stuff for you guys of like an overview about what pool testing is. So it's Desi-supported. It's a six-week program for pool test, pooled surveillance testing. Um, it ends on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Starts on um February eighth, um minus February vacation. Um, so what what it is, it's groups of students and staff organized into pools. It will be from ten to twenty-five people, but that will depend on what vendor we get paired with. Um, everyone in the pool gets a PCR test. All those sample samples are analyzed together as one PCR test. Um, if the pool result is positive, then all those people get retested with a rapid antigen test. Um, which the BioNext Now, we don't currently have it, but we're we're working on it. Um, in most cases, if a person's rapid antigen test is negative, that person returns to school. Um, if a person's. If the person's rapid antigen test is positive, um, the person is going to follow DPH isolation protocols and gets contact traces and contact traced, and they become. A positive case. Um. So. Hmm, let's see, so the test would be performed once a week. Um, it's an anterior nasal swab. It would be random. People, it would be randomized depending on who opts in. Um, samples are going to be administered by trained staff. Certain age groups of students can take their own sample under a trained staff supervision. Um, so the the per the vendor that we get, that we get um. Paired with is going to be responsible for delivering the test to to us. Um, all the testing supplies, the lab processing, the software associated with the pool testing. Um, training for school and district personnel, and then customer service and support for those in those personnel as well. Um, and this, this is only going to be covered during that six-week period. Um, so what we are going to be responsible for um is all this here. So coordinating with Desi. Um, managing all the logistics of the testing, including the test administration, data entry, software management, and then getting those completed tests to the laboratory. Um, all all the communication, education about the program. Um, distributing and processing all the consent forms, conducting the follow-up um on positive pools. Um, and then also that would be contact tracing as well, once they're confirmed, the person in the pool is confirmed positive. Um, administering and supervising the specimen collection, and then reporting all the follow-up testing that's done with the BioNext Now. So what we need is a healthcare professional to oversee the entire program. Um, it's hope if they would um likely be a nurse um or other healthcare professional. Um. And this person would pretty much just be in charge of the whole program for the six weeks. Um, so this is proposed costs from neighboring districts. Um, propos- proposal. Um, so for the first, it's six, you, I mean, you can, you can read it, what the. What that they they would cost us in this first six weeks, and then what it's going to cost us going forward if we decide to continue doing it. Um, so this was the proposed cost from a neighboring district, not our personal proposed cost.
With the permission of the Chair. This is from Gloucester, and they just recently voted, and I was on a call with the superintendent of Gloucester and five other. Superintendents who are exploring this and looking at it, and the sixty-five thousand dollars, once the program ended. Was pretty much consensus opinion for the cost, once the six weeks of Desi quote-unquote funded. Um. Expires or is over.
Um, so the vision that we have, well, the vision is ideal, so this is the hopefully ideal. It's to participate in the six-week program where the costs are supported. Um, through March twenty eighth, we're going to try to start with them, the high school and the middle school students. Those are where the highest number of cases are right now. Um, and there's more likely to be transmission in the older students. Testing should occur on Thursdays and Fridays, so cohort A and cohort B after in-person school. Um, this will hopefully reduce the amount of time that students will miss class, as they will need to remain out of school until a negative pool result is received. If there's a positive pool, so if a pool is positive, they're going to remain out of school until the individual students receive the negative BioNext Now antigen testing, and then. If follow-up testing is, so the follow-up testing would ideally be done in a centralized location. Um, and ideally outdoors. Um. But the in some of, some of the cases, it will require, like if the pool is positive. But all the BioNext Now antigen testing's come back negative, that is going to require that we send that whole pool to have an outside PCR test done. Because the BioNext Now testing, the the actual testing mechanism is not as sensitive as it could be. Um, so where we are now, um, we've submitted the survey and the statement of interest. We're trying to get set up with a BioNext Rapid Antigen. The the testing now, we, I was able. the testing now. I was able to submit the order today. They weren't able to give me a timeline as to when. We will receive it. We have, so we've established that we have sufficient PPE for this. We've developed family and staff communication about the program and the, and a consent form. So next step would be to advertise for staffing, getting set up with the BioNEX Now Rapid Antigen Testing. By wait, we wait, basically, we just have to wait for it to be delivered. And then the testing healthcare professional hire would need to be trained. And then after all that, we would need to submit the materials to get started with the actual pool testing.
That's our presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, any questions? Emily?
I just have a couple of questions. The first one is, if with all these next steps, what's the timeframe to getting this all done? If we have to find a staff person to, you know, do all the testing and they're going to start on Monday, are we going to be able to do that?
I don't know if you want to take that question, Dr. Buckey.
Sure. Yeah. I don't think that it would be feasible for us to begin until after the February break. If the school committee tonight said, we want you to pursue pool testing. I did have one community person reach out to me who is a healthcare professional who said that she's home right now. None of our current nursing staff want to take this on because we offered it internally first and then would hire a nurse as like a substitute for that person, but no internal staff wanted this.
Realistically, we could do it for five weeks.
Yes.
Okay.
For free.
For free. Yeah, yeah. No, that's what I mean. I'm just talking about the pool, the free testing. So I remember when we first got the information about the testing that they were going to provide the transportation of the test to the lab. Did that change or did I read that wrong?
So they're going to provide the stuff getting to us. We then have to either get it to them, put it in the mail. I don't know if I want to put it in the mail, but that's, that's.
So that was on us.
We have to somehow get it to them. Yep.
Okay, because I remember reading it as they would do both ways.
Okay.
I guess I just probably read that wrong. And then my other question is, how long do the pool testing, like when you get all the swabs, how long does it take to get to the results?
24 to 48 hours.
So if the children or the students are tested Thursday, they would have to be out of school for sure on that Friday?
So if their test, so we would break it, I would, we would try to break it down by cohort. So Thursday, I would try to do Cohort A.
I guess when I said that, it actually made more sense to me than that would work. And then how are each selection taken? So of the 10 to 25, is it one class does it? Or is it just like a random group of people? Like, how does that work?
So I think the best way to do it to get the best results would be like a random number generated. Have everyone who wants to do it on a list, random number generating and pick like that rather than it's like all, if it was that one classroom, it would kind of just be centralized, like isolated rather than a picking from every, where we can, basically.
Okay, so then unfortunately, individual people all over could potentially have to stay home.
Yeah.
Right, okay. All right, I think those are my questions. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. That was really helpful.
Yep.
Just add, though, that the free is not really free because we have to hire staff for this, and there's also equipment, and then there's also disposal of materials that costs Marblehead Public Schools money.
So Deanna, just following on from that. So we talked about having to hire one full-time nurse to facilitate. But I guess my question is, is that really enough? Or are there other resources that we're going to need to really to really implement for six weeks?
I'm sorry, I missed the last half of your question.
I said, is the one, the one additional staff member enough to implement this?
When I look at it honestly, and I honestly look at the amount of work, I think it will be difficult for one person. I have to be honest about that. The pools we use, the pools can be between 10 and 25 students per time. And then there's a lot of time to do all those other pieces. One thing I noticed that might not have been in the presentation, and I could have missed it too, so I apologize if I'm making a mistake here, is this also, when anyone comes into a positive, has to be placed in the Maven system for the Board of Health. So that Massachusetts is aware of any positive cases that we were defined in pool testing. So that's a whole nother step that I didn't see added in the presentation.
Even the negatives from the BioNEX Now testing would be, would need to be placed into Maven. So it would be.
I just, I'm sorry. I think positive is more important, but yes, you are.
Yeah, no.
Need to be put into the Maven system. That's a whole other thing this person would be doing in their job.
Okay, so we heard from the community, you know, in public comment that there's a lot of willingness to help out. Is this actually an area where we could have community assistance? For perhaps some of the data entry, if we have health professionals that could help on the testing and retesting days?
Asked several times, she's asked Desi about the confidentiality piece, and I don't think she's gotten a straight answer. But Megan, I don't know. Do you have any updates on that?
No updates. I did reach out to them and tried to rephrase my question a number of times to them, and they really beat it around the bush in terms of if you could or could not use community volunteers. So the way that I read between the lines was that you couldn't. However, I could maybe try to nudge them a little bit more for a more direct answer, but I did try.
Okay, so I guess really my question is, if we cannot use community volunteers to help with us, what's the true staff requirements in terms of budgetary implications?
Neighboring Gloucester, I think, talked about four or five staff people being hired. Megan, do I have that number right?
Yes.
Do they do it for their full school community?
They're doing it for their, they were starting their pilot program with the same that we're doing. So for the high.
The middle school and high school.
Yep.
Okay, okay. And so, yep, go ahead. I think you muted.
Since we're comparing ourselves to Gloucester, I think we need to be a little careful. We don't know how many nurses Gloucester has on their staff compared to what we have, or do we? And the number of students that.
I could probably find it out for you.
Yeah, the number of students that are being tested versus the number of students that we need to test might be more than Gloucester, too. I'm not 100% sure.
Right, no, I agree. Um, one of the other things you mentioned was, or someone mentioned, was about getting the the swabs or the pools to the actual labs. Where are the labs located? Is that something we have to drive to? Like, what are we talking about there?
It would be a drive. One, so it depends on the vendor that we are, that we're paired with. There's three vendors. One is the Cambridge, one's, I believe, in Cambridge. I think they're mostly located in, within the city, within Boston.
Okay. And I think you may have talked about this, but maybe I just missed it. So it's 10 to 25 members in the pod or the pool. How many pools do we do? Is it just one pool per week? Is it the same pool? Is it the same pool membership every week?
So it would be one per week. Each week it would be random.
Each week it'd be random.
Based on who opts in. Because we can't do, we can't do this without people's permission either. Like, we would have to have buy-in from the community and people would actually consent to, they'd have to, A, consent to to test, for us to, for us to place their information basically in a database, and then to retest if needed.
Okay, and so that kind of goes on to one of my next questions. What's our, what's our participation threshold?
Hard to say. When I was in the Desi meetings, they did say that there is, I can't remember the exact number, and I couldn't find it off the top of my head. I think that they are off of the webinars. I think maybe they just said it out loud, but it was about, I think they said about 80% to be, to really show us, to show us the true data, it would need to be about 80%.
And that's 80% of students and teachers?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Rotate. So like one day, one week we would do MVMS pooling, the next week we would do high school. So if you're talking about, we have five active weeks at this free, not so free price, we're talking about perhaps pooling the middle school two times and pooling the high school three times. So it doesn't really end up being a lot.
Okay, okay. And then you also mentioned if we have to do that pool and put them, you know, if you have to go through a second PCR test, is that also covered by this program or would that be at a cost to us?
It wouldn't, I mean, it depends on where they go. I mean, the school would definitely, we would need to coordinate it, whether it be with Stop the Spread or Project Beacon, but it would, it would be us that have to coordinate it.
Coordinate it, but the test would technically be free of charge?
If we do it through Stop the Spread or Project Beacon, yeah.
Because that ends up being the family's choice at that point. And when we finally get to that point, we have to let the family know that we require them to get a PCR test. So if they choose not to, they would just have to isolate like any other person and just stay away from school for the 10 days.
Yep.
And then if they choose to find out whether their family member is positive or not, they would then go get tested. But that's really more on them than it would be in the pool testing. The pool testing piece is already, is already completed by the time we ask them to go get that PCR for confirmation. Am I right about that, Megan?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, okay. And then, sorry, just two other questions, and then I'll pass it on. But what's the, what, in your opinion, what's the impact of doing this right after February vacation? You know, I feel like after both the Thanksgiving break and the winter break, we've seen an increase in positive cases in the community. So I guess I just want to make sure that this is an accurate representation of what's happening in our schools.
I mean, the week that we come back from February vacation, I don't know that it's going to be an accurate picture of what February vacation might bring, but hard to say.
And I guess just the only other thing I would ask if we do decide to move forward with this is that we limit any kind of pullouts from actual class time. So if we could schedule it on the way in or on the way out, so we're not impacting the amount of time that students are in their physical classes.
Of course, that was, that was the, that was the idea.
I figured that.
We would ask them to do it after school.
Yeah.
But again, it has to be all consensual families that are consenting that their children can be involved.
Yes, right.
Or staff people have consented, they'll be involved.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, guys.
Sarah, I know you've got your hand raised.
So I just want to clarify something before I go into my questions and comments. You're saying you're going to test one pool per week, 10 to 25?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the recommendation by Desi.
There's a lot that is deeply troubling me. And I, and I'm, I, you know, I've done a ton of research on this. My sister's an RN in New York. She's been running one of these programs at a school in New York since August. I just got off the phone with her before this, got a lot of information. They have a consult weekly with Dean of Public Health from Dartmouth University, who weighs in on, you know, how they're doing this in the best way to keep their students safe. They're testing 456 students every week, and they didn't hire a single extra nurse. Four nurses are doing it in addition to their normal duties. I find it unbelievable, the idea that we are, that a nurse would, one nurse would, is estimated to cost $5,000 a week. I, my entire family's in medicine. I don't know anybody that makes that wage.
It's not just the nurse. It's also the cost of disposal, the cost of getting.
Your staff line. You noted staff, and that was $5,000 a week.
That was from, yes, that was from, that was from a neighboring district's numbers, but yes, but they are also hiring five people.
Yeah, well, then we're looking at $1,000 a week, not $5,000 a week. I just want to make sure that when this committee is voting, that that's a big number difference. I mean, over the life of this program, that's a difference of, you know, almost $50,000. It's significant.
We don't have the exact number. So it's somewhere between what you're saying and somewhere between what is, has been already put together by a neighboring district.
I, I think it's safe to say one nurse is closer to $1,000 a week than 5,000. So I just want to make sure we're looking at this accurately. I also don't know why if it's 10, I would, I would hope that you guys would be able to fit in 10 to 25 tests a week, tests a week. I, I really think that this is a public safety issue. We heard students crying. We heard parents crying. Our community is on their knees begging us to find a way to safely bring kids back. We're in a public health crisis. We're in a mental health crisis. We need to keep our teachers still safe. I have to believe that there is a way to do this and make this work for less than those numbers say. I, I, I'm, I, I I'm kind of saddened that I'm not seeing more support from the, from the health professionals for this. I think the way through this is to identify cases and to contact trace cases. And that's how we're going to get through this. That's how we're going to shut this down. That's all we hear is identify and trace, identify and trace.
So I don't disagree with you, but I don't think the way that Desi has it set up is going to be beneficial for us.
No, I, I understand that pool testing in this fashion, where they don't do the secondary round to identify the person is problematic. I called John right away, and I said, listen, my sister's school, they've tested three different ways. This is problematic. I understand that. I understand the hurdles that come with it. But the fact that you'll have the secondary testing option on site, and to be perfectly honest, I think most families, when they get a call, testing is so easy to get in Massachusetts right now compared to neighboring states. I, I think most families, when they get a phone call, are going to go right away to Project Beacon. I mean, we had an issue, and it took us an hour and a half to get a test, and within 12 hours, we had the results. I think that that's probably going to be what's happening. And my assumption is that they produce a PCR on their own, then that, since a PCR is more accurate than the test we would have as a secondary test, that would save you guys from a step. I think we should all be, you know, at the very least, jumping on board for the six-week session. I, I don't see why we can't start on February 22nd. I don't, I, I really don't. I don't think that, I think that you guys can, can figure this out. You're, you care about our students. You care about our staff. I know you do. I think we can make this happen.
David, did you have anything?
I'm still not clear on the total numbers per week. Sarah just said that 10 people a week are going to get tested?
So it depends on the, on the contract we use.
Yes.
Some of the pool testing will allow you to have 25 pool people in the pool test, and some will only allow you to have 10. So it depends on who we contract with to do the work, and then that will give us the number of what we can test for that week. And that's how we'll figure that out. Is that correct, Megan?
Correct. There's two, so there's three total options for the vendors who we could potentially use. We don't get to choose. Desi gets to choose. So two of them, their max pools are 10, and one of them, their max pool is 25.
And there's no way that we, so it's, and what Desi is providing is for one, one round a week, so that we can't do two rounds a week through Desi.
Their recommendation is one. I didn't look deeper just because that's what they said they would provide, but yes.
But.
Can we push back and ask them how many rounds we can do?
Sure.
David?
Can I still follow through with this thought process? I'm, I've read the FAQs, and I guess I'm missing what was described in the FAQs that it's estimated to be $50 a pool. So we're going to have a pool in each grade, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th. So we'll have six pools.
No, it's one pool.
Well, that's not, that's not, I guess I'm not seeing that. And the FAQs also recommend that the students get tested with their teacher. So that your, your pool would, would be defined, it would be randomness, but it would be effectively teachers in, you know, in that actually teach these students so that you're more likely to have a cohort or a grouping of, of teachers. I mean, you wouldn't take a high school teacher and match him up with the pool of students in the eighth grade. I mean, you wouldn't take a high school teacher and match them up with the pool of students in the eighth grade if they don't even.
Well, no, we wouldn't cross schools. It would be one school or the other. And again, everyone has to consent to want to be part of it.
So what I'm hearing is if, so if they were at the, they were at the middle school and it was eighth grade cohort A, then on the black team, that would be the pool, they'd pull 10 or 25 if we're lucky, plus a teacher or with a teacher from the black team.
Or maybe more than one faculty member.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not just teachers, they want custodians. Yeah, they want custodians, they want bus drivers, they want admin, they want guidance, they want everybody. They don't, they don't want to limit it to just teachers. They want everybody to be part of this, anybody who consents to be part of it.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yep.
Go ahead, Dr. Mark.
I just think an important piece in this is the participation because some districts have not been able to get a threshold of participants. So the next step, I think for us, if we would like to continue pursuing it, is to put it out to families in and staff. How many people are interested in participating? I know a neighboring district was very excited about this and got below 40% of people that were willing to consent because you have to have their consent for the testing and for the By Next Now testing. So we would be doing two consents. We can do anything. I'm fully supportive if that's the direction we want to go, but I want us to have all of the information.
Yeah, so this, so this, we've had this conversation for a couple of, with the reopening meetings at this point. So, and I've, I've kind of changed my tune around it. You know, I, I guess I start from a place of frustration because I personally think that this, and I don't even know how wisely I want to choose my words. I personally think that this is the bottom of the barrel testing that we ever could have been given. And that makes me irate. We have begged the state as school districts from the beginning of the summer for any kind of help. And then this is what they throw at us with testing. And, you know, to test, we have a small district and so we're testing, you know, 10 kids a week, like that's insanity to me. Even if they covered every single dime of it for that first six weeks. So I'm, I start at a place of extreme frustration here. I don't know how, you know, to me, this is sort of not dissimilar to what they did with our reopening stuff and sort of saying that they're going to help us. And then like, oh, actually you guys can do it on your own. And, and it just, it's time after time. And then we end up holding the bag and looking like, you know, now we're in this spot where it is incredibly difficult to sit here and talk about turning down testing. And I, I quite frankly, don't know how we do that. But it's also such a tax on our system. And it, it, again, it just infuriates me that this is where we're at. So, so that's kind of where I come in on this. And, and then I get to this point where I don't know how we turn down testing. Because in, at the end of the day, some testing is better than no testing in my head. And, and even, even testing that isn't doing a great job. Because we, we could particularly from a community perspective. And I sort of started here kind of in the weeds with just school. And then I have a, a friend who is a doctor and we often, I often use her as a sounding board. And she kind of pulled me out, she'll do this from time to time, when I get too focused on just the schools. And she pulled me out from the schools and said, like, listen, this is a bigger issue. This is a community issue. And, and you kind of have to start to think of it in that way. So, you know, and, and then there's frustration that I don't see a lot of support on the community side of things. And I know that that's, that we're all super taxed, every, every department in this town is super taxed. But, you know, it is frustrating to me that, you know, we have been told by the Board of Health that they cannot, they do not have the capacity to help us here. And I think that's an important note, you know, we have followed up on that. We've had multiple conversations and they just can't. They're inundated with their own contact tracing as well as the vaccine piece. And they, they just can't take us on with this. So, you know, I, I, this conversation is meant so that we all go into this eyes wide open. So I just, this, these are the pieces that kind of have been stewing around for me for weeks. And, and I just, I needed to kind of put that out there.
That's why I shared that article with you the other day, the study from Johns Hopkins and Duke and the Rockefeller Foundation. Because I felt like it explained a lot of the layers that are very difficult to explain to everyone in a little presentation like we have tonight.
Sarah, you've got your hand up.
So, sorry, before we move on to that, I just want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak. So I know, kind of cut David off. So I just want to make sure, David, if you have any other questions, you get a, or you have a chance to, to ask those.
Thanks, Meg.
Uh, thank you. I, I I guess I'm clear now that it's, it's, it's one pool, but the presentation also talked about doing cohort A and cohort B. And there would be a test on Thursday and there would be a test on Friday. So that's two pools.
It would oscillate between weeks.
Yeah, I didn't mean for it to say to be, it's going to be two pools. I meant like my, the vision is to do it for cohort A on Thursday, to do it for cohort B on Friday. I'm sorry if that wasn't clear.
So when cohort A is being tested, they would be tested on Thursday. When cohort B is being tested, they would be tested at their, on their Friday in person.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Sarah.
Well, if, if, and, and to your point that it, I think the, the bottom of the barrel seems to be the number, if, if that's the number. Because I'm just sort of, it's, it's not how I understood it. And so it's good to get this clarified. But um, it's also, you know, I have a personal example where my wife's school gets 600 students tested a week in Boston. And they do it in about four hours.
Exactly. So that's, I have the similar experience, David. I, I, I wonder if we misunderstood this entire program. If Gloucester is saying they need four to five nurses, they don't need four to five nurses to test one pool of 10 to 25 kids. So clearly they're testing large groups, multiple pools. It wouldn't be that Gloucester got one set of rules and Marblehead got another. And, and David read it and I read it, the average price, like, none of this fits together, to be perfectly honest. Like Gloucester's not hiring, no school district is hiring five RNs to test 10 to 25 kids a week. They're testing multiple pools. They have to be. There's, there is no way on earth that we are, that, that this is being understood the way it is.
So I think it's clear that, that we need to, we need to gather a bit more information, starting with our, our community who would be interested in it. Because, you know, that, I, I, I listened into one of the earlier webinars. I think actually I listened to it as a recorded version. And so I also remember that 80% threshold. So to me, that seems like kind of where it's at. So, you know, I don't know if somebody wants to help me with a motion or if we just want to keep kind of talking this through a little bit before we make a motion. You know, we've got, we've got two budget workshops next week, so we are meeting. So we could sort of, you know, carve a smidgen of time out for, for this. We also have the ability to meet over February vacation if needed. And we can do that remotely, obviously. So if anybody is going anywhere. Cause I think, I think this needs, I think we need a little bit more information. And, and you know, and I know, I appreciate the, the presentation that we've gotten tonight for sure. I know that there's been a lot of webinars. I missed the most recent one. So I, you know, and the first one that I listened to was relatively lengthy. So I, I really appreciate all of the background work that's being done on this. And I, I want to say I particularly appreciate the fact that right now a By Next Now. I've had many conversations about that with the nurse over at Tower. And I think that in and of itself is a highlight. And then that is testing that I can get behind because if we have a kid come into school and develop symptoms, that's, that's where that test can be used. And that test can be used after this is all, you know, whether or not we do the six weeks and stop or continue forward. You know, that, 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 that works for us on a larger scale in all of our buildings. So that's a really good thing that's come of this already. So I'll ask.
Motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the pool testing program participation as laid out by the state.
So I just want to make sure that we've actually, that the state has actually laid out enough for Sarah's motion. Cause I'm a little confused as to whether they have.
I, I would like some clarification on some of the pieces that we've raised tonight. And I think one other piece that I'd like clarification, not clarification, but further investigation on is, you know, I know we've had conversations with the Board of Health, but this is Desi sponsored, obviously. And there is obviously benefit to our schools, but there's also benefit to the community. And I would like to explore that a little bit more, maybe with the town administrator or with some of our other services within town to see if there's any, any possibility of partnership for the, for this program. So I think personally I need some more information before I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the table.
So there's a motion on the table. We don't have a second.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Thank you, David.
So my big question right now is to, I guess to John. With the motion on the table, does that give you enough to send out the, the forms and ask for permission from our students?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, and those are ready to go.
Okay, and I would, I would think it would be beneficial to send out at least the By Next Now one to the entire district.
Yep.
Okay.
That's, can hit send after the meeting tonight?
So with those consent forms, is there a deadline on them? How long families have to turn them around?
We can create one.
I'm just wondering if we can have that information and maybe you could potentially investigate with, you know, other community departments before, you know, by one of our next meetings next week. So we know, you know, if it's something that, whether we voted or not, that the community is actually going to participate in.
So maybe we can add this to, I mean, does Tuesday sound too rushed on that?
No.
Okay.
I, I, I think your point is well taken, Megan, because in that call, another community was using EMTs and firefighters to help facilitate some of the testing or the follow-up testing. So, you know, that could be something for us to explore here as engaging community partners.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and it's been seconded. Do we have any further questions before we call for the roll call? Yep.
I'm looking at the FAQs on Desi. And it says five to 10 people in the pool, tests per pool, one pool is what they're recommending, from what I'm reading. So that's just, because I know we want clarification on that.
Sorry, say that again?
The pool size should not be lower than five, while most vendors will cap at 10.
And, right, and there's a vendor, as the nurses mentioned, there's three vendors right now.
Right, so one will go up to 25.
Right, if we get that, there's one vendor out of three that will allow 25.
But still just one pool.
That's what this looks like. It doesn't actually say.
Right, it doesn't.
So you're right. I think we should clarify that for sure.
And we're not sure if that would be a lottery or dependent on the size of your town. We don't have.
Right.
There's also other factors, obviously.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yes, I'm proud we adopted a pool, pool testing policy.
And we will, we will make sure that that is on our agenda for Tuesday. Probably, I'll probably place it at the beginning. All right, Megan and Deanna, thank you very much. We really appreciate your time and all the effort that you put into this.
Yeah, I think that that's, that's an important thing to note. Our nurses have worked so hard and have put in extra effort. And so I, I just don't want that to be lost in a discussion about additional work or if we have to hire another nurse or taking on additional responsibilities as a lack of recognition for the good work that they have done since June.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, John. I mean, I think this pandemic, you know, has been overtaxing our nursing staff to begin with. And then the amount of information and time that you've had to put into researching this, you know, is above and beyond. So absolutely, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
And all your energy on this.
Yeah, in my role at Tower, I work incredibly closely with the school nurse. And, and, you know, I know how stressed out she is at this point and, and what an amazing job she's doing. And, you know, Deanna, I, I know you better than I know Megan, but I have to assume throughout the district that, you know, all of our nurses are working equally as hard as my coworker. And none of this is easy. And, and you guys are taking care of the contact tracing within the schools when we do have positives that, within our student and faculty population. And, and I, you know, that's a huge task. And none of this is easy. And, and I think, you know, as we've seen from our public comment tonight, that, that there's, we've really hit a crescendo here with this entire pandemic. And that goes for our nursing staff within the schools in particular as well. So I really appreciate you guys taking the time to do this, put this together. You know, I've been coordinating the presentation piece of this and how it was going to function for this evening with, via email for the past couple of days with Deanna and Megan. And so I thank you for, for joining us tonight.
Thanks. And I just want to thank all of my nurses because just so that everyone knows, we have had no school in-school transmission of COVID-19 for staff or students the entire time we've been in school since September 14th. We're now in February, which usually as we get close to Valentine's Day, I remember the little kindergartners walking around with their 100-day little halos on. So we're close to 100 days if we were in regular school. And I'm very, very proud because of the mitigating factors we use in Marblehead Public Schools. We have kept no transmission of COVID-19 staff or students in our schools. So thanks.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And it just, it, it, I think, you know, as, as much as we've just talked about pool testing and that it can be an important tool, I think it's very clear that, that our other mitigation approaches are, are wildly successful in keeping our staff and students safe. And, and I know how, how often kids come down to the nurse, even in a regular year. And so, and I know that teachers are sending them down even more out of, you know, an overabundance of precautions. So I, you know, I really appreciate all the work that you guys are all doing and, and playing a massive role in keeping our schools open.
You're welcome.
John? Go ahead, Dr. Mark.
Clear my screen again? Do a presentation here. All right, I will try to move expeditiously through that because I know that there are several other things on the agenda. Just did that. Just a reminder, I said I would touch base with you on my goals periodically. I've listed them there. Continue to do the new superintendent's induction program. Have gotten into a, a once-a-month meeting in Lynnfield with Chris McGrath, my coach and the Lynnfield Superintendent. So continuing with the three monthly meetings on that, which goes well. Budget is underway. You each got a budget workbook or notebook this evening. And I won't steal Michelle's thunder, but we have a wonderful budget subcommittee. And we've been meeting and there's a calendar and you all receive budget priorities. The leadership team continues to develop in spite of COVID, might I say. We do get together for in-person socially distanced masked meetings. We will be meeting over the February break. I will talk a little bit more about that, but we're having a two-day retreat over the break. I would say area for development continues to be school visits. As much as I like to get out of Widger Road and is rewarding as it is every time that I do, I'm not in the schools as much as I would love. I do, um, I'm not in the schools as much as I would love to be. And every time I'm in the schools, it's affirming. And I'm like, why do you ever stay on Widger Road? But then the phone rings or the email comes in or, um, there's another fire, uh, that ignites. So, um, instructional improvement, continue to work. Uh, Nan is an invaluable resource. She has been so great and is leading that math adoption work. Um, so, um, I do feel good about the instructional improvement things. Uh, and all of these are tied in because it's a leadership team and it's the budget. And then diversity, um, some great stuff, uh, happening across the district. Um, I was so glad that Henry Turner spoke tonight. He is such a valued colleague of mine. He was on the State Principals Association, uh, when I was the president and he is, um, so articulate and so thoughtful and such a resource across the Commonwealth. So the fact that he is a header and part of our community and somebody that I can reach out to particularly when we have a diversity goal. So I wanted to give a nod to Henry Turner in my work on those goals. Um, collective bargaining, super exciting, something that you will take a vote on. We do have a, an agreement with the Marblehead Educators Association, and that will extend to all six contracts tonight only. We are voting on the unit A, and this is the language that they have proposed for that motion. Uh, Joan, who has been noted in this meeting, but I'll just again, uh, say she has been an invaluable partner. And there are some language things that I would like to address. And so she has made this, um, caveat, which we have talked about, that's, uh, we could establish a subcommittee, um, to look, um, at maybe doing some memorandums of agreement, uh, around, uh, language, in particular contracts, in particular the custodian contract or tutors, paraprofessionals. There are some things that I would like to do there. But right now, tonight, what is in front of you is, uh, what I think is a very successfully negotiated unit A, um, collective bargaining agreement for the next three years. And I will say some districts have said because of COVID, let's just do one year to get through it. And then, uh, but I'm really proud of the fact that we were able to get a three-year bargaining agreement. Do you want to take that vote now?
Sure.
Do you want the motion before questions?
Uh, sure. I'll, we'll read the motion. Let me find my paper. All right. So can I get a motion? We actually have two motions that I'll need with this. Um, can I get a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for a collective bargaining agreement with the Marblehead Education Association Unit A, the teacher's contract, covering the period from September 1, 2021 to August 31, 2024, as presented?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. All right. Megan, did you have a question or a comment?
My question is around the subcommittee piece. So is that the second?
That's the second. Yes.
So, um, always my question was pertaining to that.
Sarah Fox, I actually don't have you on my screen right now. So if you have any questions.
Yeah. Um, so I just want to confirm because I didn't see in the Dropbox the actual.
So is, is this usual and customary? Will, will we make the terms of the memorandum of agreement available to the press and others?
Mm hmm.
Yes.
Okay. So I just do confirm or vote.
I'd like to just say that I want to thank everybody who's been involved in this. I mean, um, this is, uh, I think I came in on the first year of, uh, this might be the third contract since I've been on the committee and, uh, years of being on the finance committee. And I, I want to recognize, um, the work that was done here and the agreement that was able to be reached with the, uh, Marblehead Education Association. And, um, it's, I think it's just will support the initiatives, um, that we need to fund in this town. I think it is, um, something that recognizes as well, the commitment that the district has, has made to its, um, staff here, you know, throughout, throughout the last year. And, um, that will be able to continue that. Um, certainly along with these agreements come other benefits that are provided to our employees. But, um, I just think this is, uh, really, uh, a good agreement that is fiscally responsible for the town. And I, I want to thank everybody who was involved for being able to reach a three-year agreement in a pandemic and, um, keep us moving forward so that we can do just that, continue to focus on delivering education and not having to, um, be going further down the road and, and dealing with collective bargaining agreements. So thank you, everybody for getting us to this point.
Yeah, I completely agree, David. Well said.
Okay. I just want to go back to what I was saying. I want to confirm. I know what we're voting on. I know we talked about certain things in executive session, but I actually thought we'd see a redlined version of the previous contract and any changes. So I want to make sure I know what I'm voting on. My understanding is there's no language change whatsoever outlined in anybody's roles, responsibilities, commitments, anything of the sort, that the only change is outlining the pace, the pay increase, which will become 5% over a period of three years.
That is correct.
Okay. So nothing else?
Nothing else.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure because I just, I hadn't seen anything.
All right. We have a motion and it's seconded. Um, Meg or Emily, do you have anything? Did you? Okay. All right. Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Emily Baron?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Okay. That carries five to zero. So now there, as, as we had discussed previously as well, I, I need a second motion because there is going to be a little bit of work behind the scenes still. Um, I need a motion to approve the establishment of subcommittees to investigate and report out findings or recommendations to the parties for consideration and negotiation regarding language changes.
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Megan, you had a question previous?
Yeah, just about this because we, there is, um, mention of a subcommittee in the existing MOA that we, um, that we voted in September, six, you know, six people on that. Can we just use that committee?
I wouldn't see why not.
Yeah, we don't need another committee, right? Because that one's already kind of got the people that you need on it, right? And that committee already exists.
Who's the school committee rep on that?
Me. Right. The chair.
I just want to make sure where some of that stuff might be stuff that comes up at, um, uh, reopening, you know, for instance, when you talk about possibly changing distancing and stuff like that, that we're not in, that it's not technically, you know, that, that subcommittee is all present or a majority of them present at the reopening, which isn't, I just want to make sure we're not, we're not getting into any issues with open meeting on that. That's my concern.
I don't think we are. Um, uh, the, the MOA hasn't been discussed in depth, other than just being a mention that it is a thing and that these things need to be vetted out again if we're going to move anything that we've got going on. Um, so I don't, I don't see it as an issue at all.
So there's no discussion of changing spacing or distancing at all, or the need for it? Because that would qualify.
Are we talking about the contract piece? Was there going to be a committee to review some language?
Yeah, I'm just saying that some of the topics that are covered in that committee are also kind of being discussed at reopening, just by the nature of what is involved in reopening. And I want to make sure we're not getting ourselves in trouble.
Mm hmm.
Don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why I wondered if it should be someone that's not on the real, like if the school committee rep should be someone that's not on the reopening committee. So that fixes that.
Can we just check that first? I just hate, I just hate to like create another committee that we, if we don't necessarily need it. So can we just confirm that? And then, and then if we need it, we can come back and vote it.
Absolutely.
Next, next meeting.
Yeah.
So then what do we do with this motion? Do we just?
We, we can pass it. We can pass it because we, and we're just going to name the person, you know, clarify the name of the person who will be on the subcommittee at a later date. So it will establish the subcommittee officially that we need one, and then we can go back and.
So is that not, is that committee not already established? Because, you know, like it's already referenced in that, in that MOA and the membership is, is in that MOA.
I would, I, I would just suggest that if there is a subcommittee. I would just suggest that if there's like an issue in the custodians contract, Joan would likely want to have a custodian as part of the conversation for that or tutor or paraprofessional or something like that.
So maybe we need to reach out to, uh, Liz Valerio and clarify what the subcommittee or it, I mean, it says subcommittees, so we may be talking about multiple.
Yep.
Okay. But I still think we can pass this motion.
Okay.
Because we're not creating, we're not creating.
The entire committee is going to vote on whatever comes out of those. So if the custodians say we want to extend our lunch break, for example, that would come to you as something to approve.
Okay. And this isn't work that's being done in the next three weeks. This will be, this will be going on for a while.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Emily Baron?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
We're not, we're not voting to establish the makeup, correct?
Correct. Nope. Not at all.
Yeah.
Just the fact that we will establish subcommittees.
Yes.
We're going to do a little bit more digging on, uh, what the makeup should be. What's the best practice? All right. So that passes five to zero. Thank you, guys.
Okay. The next thing is the, am I still on?
Yep.
Annual town report. Um, I am, uh, proposing to revise, um, what we submit as the annual town report. Um, it seemed really bland to me in that you need a measles, mumps and rubella shot to enroll in the Marblehead Public Schools. And these are the phone extensions for the people. Um, I, I get that some pedestrian information is utilitarian and we want to include that. But I have asked each principal and each director to write a synopsis. And boy, can they write. So, um, I had said, you know, three to five sentences, a paragraph or two. Most are coming in at three or four pages. Certainly, I know the town administrator is not going to want to have a Marblehead Public Schools novela. So Lisa and I are going to go in and trim that down. But I think it gives a really in-depth look at the district over the last year. And as a new superintendent coming in, it's kind of hard to write because I wasn't here, but Bill did such a great job and is, continues to be a resource that I can reach out and ask him questions. But I think it, it's important for people to see September, 2019 was a very different world. And you hired a new superintendent in January, and that was a very different world. And then you had a pandemic hit. And so seeing that through the lens of each building, I think is important for the community. And if we need to ask the community to support us going forward, then it increases the transparency into each building and each program and what they were able to do, provided the resources they had at that time. So, um, I don't have that for you tonight. Deadline for administrators was Friday. And so Lisa has done what Lisa does. She worked Saturday and Sunday pulling it all together and we will go in and edit it and hopefully have something to you. Um, it is due, uh, next Friday to the town, February 12th, but I'm hoping to get it to you individually, um, next week.
Great.
Good. Um, I'm going to race through this and you can ask me to come back and talk to you about it. But I know that the agenda has some bigger things than me talking about the survey that we did. This just gives you some, uh, information on survey participation. The red is what we had in November. The white is what we saw in January. The second graph gives you the elementary school, uh, participation, middle school, high school, faculty and staff. The, what you get is a 30,000-foot view of surveys. The real value is what we give to building principals. And so they get the anecdotal comments that are related to their school, their programs, their building, their students, their families. And so when I present to school committee, you're getting a very global view of the information and you don't know, well, is that two high school parents that are saying that? Or is that 40 middle school parents saying that? The principals get that level of granularity in the surveys. Just some areas of, uh, strength. Um, pacing is on track and I'll have a slide coming up that says a little bit more about that. Um, in-person parents and students continue to feel very positively about the health, uh, physical health and wellness. Uh, and Deanna talked about that a little bit. Um, families feel that they have sufficient information to make, uh, their learning model decision. And I'm going to talk about learning models here in a minute. Uh, but anytime you see close to 90, 85% of people feeling that they have the information they need to make a decision, um, that's positive. And then people are pleased with, uh, communications that we have done. Social emotional concerns across the board. And that does not surprise you based on what you heard at the opening of the meeting tonight. And I will be talking about plans, uh, to address that, um, when I move through this. Um, teachers still reporting that they are feeling very stressed, um, and the balance in the work life. Um, remote students feel that the workload is too heavy. Uh, that was, uh, resounding and I have a slide on that coming up. And as time wears on, fatigue increases. And I think you heard that in public comment tonight. Um, this is a little bit about the remote students and this is concerning that these are students reporting out that nobody feels that the workload is too light. But many people feel that it's too heavy or much too heavy. And that's interesting because sometimes as we talk about school and what students are doing, we get into the idea, they don't have enough time. They don't have enough time on learning. What they don't have enough time is direct instruction with a teacher. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit later, but I think that this should get our attention and it has my attention. Um, and again, this breaks out the information where people feel that they have, uh, enough, uh, to make an informed learning model decision. Interestingly, back in November, when you asked teachers about pacing, less than a third reported they felt like they were on pace with the information. January survey, over half. And again, do you want 54% of your teachers saying, I think that I'm on pace? No. You want 90 to 100%, but it shows a precipitous increase in, uh, where they were in November compared to now. Um, this is what I want to speak about is a question on the survey is what would make you leave, um, the hybrid learning model? And I think it's very, very telling that two-thirds of our families say nothing would make us leave. But I do want to point out that reducing the distancing, which is something I'm going to talk about in a little bit, there are 184 families that say that could be a lever for me. That doesn't mean that we don't do it, but as we look to increase in-person learning time, and again, I keep saying, I'm going to talk about that, but I want to get through some of these slides, that's not a negligible number. And so if half of those, if we changed, uh, the distancing, um, 90 families, um, I know then the spread of that, is it two first grade families and 30 second grade families? So looking at that numbers and maybe some of them would say, no, the in-person time is just much too valuable. Um, I didn't, I would change my opinion, but I think it's important for the committee to see that information.
Now, John, you have that bright breakdown, don't you? Because on the survey, it asked us what grade our children were in. So you should be able to correlate what grades are willing to leave.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So this is just, um, some information, uh, about remote parents and, uh, hybrid parents and their views of district, uh, communication. I would say, because communication has been a priority for me, great pride in over two-thirds of our families are reporting out that it's of our families are reporting out that it's comprehensive and clear. Frequent enough, some would argue too frequent, too much. The level of detail, again, some would argue, get to the point enough of the superfluous is a word that I hear. Information, the breadth of topics and then the sufficient context. And again, there are certainly areas for improvement in there. So that brings me to, I think we have reached a pivotal moment in where we are with hybrid learning. I think the public comments tonight underscore what I was planning to talk about. We asked for a pause in October because teachers felt we were listening to parents too much. And again, that's a generalized statement. Parents are now feeling that we listen to teachers too much. I think we have to start listening to the students and their voices, particularly tonight. The Board of Health this week said that the six-foot distancing was a suggestion. And I think that that is a prime opportunity for me to say, that's the only lever that we have left. So we have not been sitting on our hands since October. We have looked at, do we do an AM cohort and a PM cohort where children could be in five days a week, but reduced time. And so there were liabilities with that. People didn't like that. We were like, okay, can we take the cohorts and bring them in full days? Include lunch and keep them until 2:30. People didn't care for that particular model. The president is saying in the first hundred days, he wants students back in school. The governor has been making this push. The commissioner is making this push. Districts are starting to do this and there's no reason we cannot. So I would like the committee's support in working with the administrative team over the two-day retreat in February for bringing our students back, combined cohorts, five days a week. The logistics of it, we will figure out, but I think it's the right thing to do for our students, given the mental health concerns, and those are borne out in the surveys that our students need to be back in school five days a week. I think we would start with the four hours we're doing now, which we have proven can be successful. But look at that distancing piece. And it could be in some elementary classrooms, five and a half spacing as opposed to six. In other classrooms, it could be less. We won't go below three. But we did say at the beginning of the year, when we put all the planning together, that we could bring our schools back at three-foot distancing and the guidance and the recommendations at that time were go with six-foot distancing. CDC is changing on that. Other health has articulated very clearly tonight are saying the six-foot distancing could be reviewed. And I think it's time that we do it and we're bringing students back five days a week.
I will gladly ask for a motion to support the superintendent and the principals to create a plan to bring our students back at lower distancing levels and fully in-person.
Who moved?
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. So for me, this has always been about data. And I, in the fall, I was very concerned because we didn't have data to truly support that lowering our distancing was, was safe. And we talked about this, you know, all of a sudden this three-foot distance came out of the blue. Where did it come from? What was the, you know, how did it back it up? And I think at this point, we see throughout this country that, that has, you know, gone through so much that it, that it doesn't really impact. That schools are not spreaders. That schools, quite frankly, are probably the safest place people can be because the mitigation protocols are in effect and they're being monitored and closely adhered to. And, you know, whether a school has been in at three feet or six feet, there is not spread within our schools in a massive way. And, you know, I, I personally had a bit of a come to Jesus this week on this. It's been kind of slowly building, but I, and I've seen other people. And then I think in public comment tonight, it's very clear that we, that we need to move forward on this.
The only point of, I don't even point of clarification, but just something I'd like to advocate for is those five half-days, but to keep, you know, if we can, keep those afternoon zooms with their teachers. Cause I do think that's important, you know, consistency of schedule for the students.
Agreed.
I would agree with that.
Um, I, I wanted to ask John a couple of questions. I, where there was, I think it was 189 families that identified they would possibly, that this would possibly trigger them to go remote. I just want a commitment from you that anybody, we're not holding people at this point to semester or trimester marks, that anybody that wants to go full remote because of this change in distancing will be accommodated in a remote program. No one, no one will be turned away.
I, I think that's an easy commitment for me to make, Sarah. I think that is a reasonable request because it is a dramatic shift for some families that started remote and looked and said, okay, the six-foot distancing seemingly is safe and is working. I could see a family feeling like the rug has been pulled out from under them and it's no longer something they want to do. I just want to be clear that depending on where numbers land, teachers might change. So if you had Mrs. Gold as your teacher in second grade and we have 20 children that want to go remote, Mrs. Golden might have to be the remote teacher and her students shared with other classrooms. And my guess is some families would be amenable to that just to get back in-person five days. But there is nothing that is just a light switch. I'm committed to bringing our children back in combined cohorts, five days a week, knowing that there may be concessions that we have to make in terms of teacher assignments.
Okay. And then my next question to this is, you know, if there happens to be enough of those kids leaving at the high school that would justify taking some of those kids that are in ingenuity class and now giving them to an actual teacher. I, I think we, we hear from these high school kids that this is soul crushing. We, we've seen them cry at our meetings. And I, I think, you know, we're doing this to help kids get more time with, with teachers, which I, I support. But I don't, that group at the high school who we've heard so much about the impact on their mental health can't be left behind. We, we have to as a district help those students as well. There are students just as much as any other student. So I want a commitment that we're going to look at ways to improve their social emotional health and their interaction with their peers and their ability to be with a Marblehead educator because I'm not ready to say this group of students, we have to help and these ones, nah, they're good.
I, I think to be fair, Sarah, that's not at all what I was suggesting.
It's not, but we have to help those students. I, we're doing right by a large group with this vote, but I want to do right by everybody.
As do I. So I think this is where we are so lucky to have Dan Bauer as the high school principal, because there's no one with a bigger heart who cares more and will do whatever he can. So I don't want to make a commitment to what Dan will do, but I know that he will not leave the remote learners behind.
I, I also think it's worthwhile to say from my position, not, not on school committee, but in the, within the community, that I don't want anybody going into this thinking that this is going to be a home run that, you know, that everything is going to get so much better. It's, I do think it's going to increase connections. I think it's going to, I think it's the best thing to be done right now. It's something that we can do, quite frankly, that will have positive benefit. I think, I think where we are at, what we are seeing with our students and, and, and with our teachers and with ourselves is deeper than school being, you know, half-days, two and a half days a week. And so I just, I, I just feel like we need to be clear about that too, because again, we talk about a mental health crisis. School's not going to fix that. And that's going to be around longer than the, than COVID is, much, much longer than COVID is. So I just, that's another piece that's been weighing very heavily on me this week, so I need to put that out.
And thank you for saying that. Cause I think, I think the main piece, I mean, education, we're here to educate students, but I think what we're hearing from people is these kids need the social interaction. They need to see their peers, their teachers every day, and this is a desperate need. And, and you know what? The kids aren't just suffering, their parents are suffering, which then is this huge, you know, avalanche between, in, in the whole family setup. But that's why I want to say like, we have to find some way to give those, those remote kids that human connection too, because it is so important right now.
Yeah. And I think that's why I, that's why I piggybacked on your comment right there, Sarah, is because this, this is bigger, it's bigger than school. It's, you know, we cannot unfortunately, like just broadly let our kids start functioning as they were a year ago today. And, and until we can do that, we are going to have to continue to be creative because we do have the ability and the, and the, the time with the kids as, as a school system. But so that we can continue to try to meet needs in, in more and more creative ways. But, and I think that's to your point, Sarah, why we're seeing such negative impacts with our adolescent population who are fully remote is because that is so wrong for what those kids developmental needs are. It is wrong in every way, shape and form that they're home and with their families and, you know, and, and in their rooms, day in and day out. And, you know, they should be out, you know, breaking away from their families and, and, you know, being, you know, figuring out who they are and the, the circumstances here prevent that. And so yeah, I, I don't have any solutions on that. I don't think there are, but I, that I just needed to say it.
Through the chair. I just want to say that I was talking to somebody today and they were talking about, well, we'll need time to develop that. We're not. This is an immediate need. And I know people question, well, why do you always start with the youngest? I think Nan could articulate the literacy gaps, but it's harder at the middle school, high school. So I'm looking at this, starting with our earliest grades as soon as possible. Again, the administrative team's meeting over February vacation. I'm hoping that the rollout will be soon thereafter. We're not going to take six weeks to figure this out. And we're not going to phase in in three-week periods. I'm wanting to get the distancing down, be able to share out to families what that's going to be so that they can make educated decisions, but those who want to be back in person, regardless of the distancing, and you saw on that survey, two thirds of our families are saying there is nothing that would make me leave the hybrid, even with the distancing being put out as a specific example. So I have great faith in Matt Fox and Dan Bauer, but it is more complicated at the high school with children moving, going to different classrooms with different cohorts. And those teachers also understandably, their needs need to be attended to as well. Not that we can't do it, but it is a little easier pre-K to six to get this off the ground.
But I think that's a really important point and I'm glad you brought it up because this has been one of my concerns, right? Is that we kind of did that. You know, we did the phase in, in the, in the fall and that made sense. I'm not like second guessing that, but in this case, and I know you're going to work out the plan, but keeping that as tight as possible is for me a huge priority, right? Because like you said, it's the adolescents that from a social emotional standpoint are probably suffering the most. So we've got to like tighten up that timeline as much as, you know, practically possible.
You have a commitment from me to do that.
Thank you.
And Sarah, I know we try not to merge the public and private too much, but I've heard nothing but good things about the bucket system over at Tower. And I wonder, especially with those younger kids and we're reducing, we're reducing spacing, but we want to make our teachers feel safe too. If we want to kind of talk, not right now, but you know, look into that a little more. Cause from what I hear, it's working really, really well.
It's a phenomenal system. I actually had worked a little bit with Emily and Melissa Kaplovich offline this past fall when I kind of watched it roll out at Tower and how, and how great it was. So Melissa's actually been on my list of people that I need to text and, and say like, hey, move this forward. Like, let's get the PTOs on this. Let's, you know, can we, can we make it PTO or then, you know, do we have to take it back? And if it can't be PTO, then can it, you know, where, where can we find this money?
Well, not for nothing, we just heard a ton of parents say, how can we help? I think we put a link up there and you'll have the money by Sunday. I mean, we're buying, we're buying, all we're looking for is those big Home Depot buckets and the kids carry their supplies and they use them as a seat and their lunch pail and everything.
Yeah. Meg or Emily, you did some work on this.
So I have an update that third grade had two pilot programs of buckets. Ace Hardware has now donated buckets for the other three. So the Village Third Grade all has the buckets and I know they love them. The teachers love them. So it, it just shows that we can start kind of getting them out to everybody.
Yeah. And I think this highlights for me, you know, and, and John as a heads up, where my head goes with this is that as soon as we get, these buckets are a way to get kids outside. So they can carry their stuff and then they flip them and they sit on them so that they're not sitting on the wet ground and the cold ground. And they can, you know, there's still plenty of classes at Tower that unless it's cold and snowy or rainy or really frigid as it was last week, there are still many classes that are going outside. A little bit less on learning, but to eat, to do their snack and to eat their lunch. Because lunch is a, is an issue, you know, and that, it's a, it's a, that's a big hurdle. So I am gonna, I'm, I, in my head, we roll this out, our weather gets better and we continue to move forward. And, and continue to look at this. And the buckets to me help that.
Nice work on that pilot, Emily. Awesome. No, I mean it. It's not a joke. I mean it.
Thank you. And that's what they do. They take their snacks, put them in the bucket and then they carry and they sit in a circle or in a line and they sit on their bucket and they eat their snack and it's really, it's very cute also.
At Tower, they're, they're actively and effectively using them pre-K through eight. The, the younger grades, I think through second grade have the, is it three gallon versus five gallon, I want to say. So they have the three gallon because it's, then it's a lot easier for them to sit on and they just don't have quite as much stuff to carry. So I think that there's a space for these, depending on what the teachers think, you know, kind of throughout our system.
Sarah, can you get some pictures next week and, and get them to John? Cause I, just driving by it, it's like, okay, that looks like a good idea.
Yep.
So I will just say thank you. Sarah shared a YouTube video with me last night that has been tugging on me and to hear students tonight, this is the right step. So thank you.
Well, I think it's thank you for making it.
Yep.
We still have a motion out there, but nobody wants to see a grown man choked up. Let's move on to the agenda.
We, we voted this, right?
We didn't vote.
No, we didn't vote. All right.
Vote it. Come on.
Thank you, David. Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox.
Yes. I just want to clarify, this is going to take a vote of the union to to have.
I, I am very remiss in not saying that.
Yes. So John.
Conversation started with Joan. I went to Joan on Tuesday this week and said, this is what I'm going to talk about at school committee and they are receptive to the conversation. It is a negotiation, but I do not get a sense from Joan that there would be, they're not amenable to the conversation. And certainly vaccination plays a piece in this. And I did reach out to Andrew Petty to say, could we just get an educator clinic here, open the field house one Saturday and that is not possible and that, that's not a And that, that's not a ding on the Board of Health. It's just not how the rollout is happening. But Joan was one of the first people I talked to and she said that she thinks people will be receptive to the conversation.
And I think that more so from sitting in those meetings is, is a lack of vaccine. They're just.
Yes. Yep.
For sure.
Well, thank you, John. All right. So that brings us on to our schedule of bills. Everybody had this in their packet. So can I get a motion to approve the identified schedule of bills totaling $3,410,305? Megan moved.
Second.
David second. Any questions on those? All right. Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor. David Harris.
Yes.
Emily Barron.
Yes.
And Sarah Fox.
abstain.
Okay. Abstain?
Yeah, I've talked to Michelle. She can.
Okay, sounds good. I'm sorry, I was.
It's a non-dramatic issue whatsoever. It's just, we need to clarify. My daughter had outside testing done, so I want to make sure that her tests aren't in that bout.
Gotcha. Sorry, it took me, I was kind of in autopilot there. So. All right. Pre-kindergarten and kindergarten tuition recommendations. So I will, go ahead, Michelle, are you on? Do you want to give us any background? I see you now.
Sure. Yes. Yes. As we are preparing to kick off the preschool and kindergarten registration, coming to you to set the rates for the new school year. This year is obviously not a typical year. We're only offering a half day preschool program and we do not have any full day kindergarten revenue. But last year we did have 139 full day kindergarten students, paying students and 23 paying preschool students. So we had brought in last year roughly 430,000 or, you know, estimated prior to COVID, we had estimated 430,000 for kindergarten and 85,000 for preschool. As you had seen the presentation from Eric Oxford at the last meeting, we are proposing to expand our current preschool program and expand the hours as well as the actual programs and offer a transitional kindergarten program. With that being said, we are proposing the, the rates as follows. The full day kindergarten tuition would be set at $3,500 for the year. Half day preschool tuition would be set at $4,000. Full day preschool would be $6,000. Half day transitional kindergarten, if that program is to go forward, would be $5,000. And full day transitional kindergarten would be $7,000. And if you have any questions about those, please let me know.
Well, I will ask for the motion and then we can take questions. Can I get a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 school year tuition rates for, at 3,500 for full day kindergarten, 4,000 for half day preschool, 6,000 for full day preschool, 5,000 for half day transitional kindergarten and 7,000 for full day transitional kindergarten? Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. All right. Any questions within any of this? Do you want to turn your mic on?
Did we or do we? We don't need to vote Eric's stuff. That was just for presentation in preparation for this.
Correct.
Okay.
Michelle?
Yes.
Do I need to abstain because I'll be paying that?
No, no, not at all.
All right. I will call for a vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
All right, five to zero. Thank you. And thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right. Michelle, will you please introduce the draft budget and budget notebooks?
Yes. So all of you should by now have your draft budget notebooks that literally are hot off the printer about four o'clock today. They have a similar setup and feel as they were last year, presented to you for that first time in that format. There is some additional information in those binders. That's why they're actually bigger. We originally planned a same size binder and then we found it was way too much paper for them. So hopefully next year, we're actually going to look towards an electronic version. But we would also have paper available for those of you that do not prefer electronic version. I'm personally a paper person, but I've used electronic budgets and it's a great thing. So that's something we will look forward to for next year. But there is a tab for every school and cost center in the book as, as it was last year. You will notice one, we actually included the food service program this year. While it is not a general fund operating budget, you know, program, it does have an effect on our operating budget because if that program does not bring in the revenues to support the expenses, the general fund does have to absorb it. So I thought it was really important for the school committee to have a good handle on what our operating costs are in that program as well as our estimated revenues. And obviously, you know, that program has not been in a typical operation since COVID hit last March. But we're hoping that we can resume those operations next year. So those are those tabs. You do have that additional tab this year. Right now, your summary tab is empty. So do not think that there's something missing out of your books. Well, there is, but it wasn't missed in error. The summary tab will be provided to you by next Tuesday's meeting at the, the earliest. I mean, the latest would be, you know, at the very beginning of that meeting. It will be a complete roll up of every single line with the associated budget request figure. We're still working through some of the salary pieces and movement due to transfers and whatnot. So we need to try to figure those out a little bit more. But you'll get that next week and there's a miscellaneous tab. Really, it's for you as we hand out various other documents throughout the budget process. There's not one specific document to go into that tab. And there's a couple of empty tabs at the end that you can use for anything, you know, we'll provide various tracking as we make changes throughout this budget process. So last year's binders were pretty full and didn't really have extra tabs. So we added a few in this year. But I don't want to dive into really any of the information. I know you guys just got your books. But I will be working on that roll up summary. And we will have that next week and we will take the big, big deep dive into every single budget next week.
Yeah, and I think that's an important note to make here is that this is the rollout of the books. We're getting them tonight. We will have two meetings next Tuesday as well as next Thursday where we will have each of the principals as well as each of the district administrators in charge of these, each of these tabs come in and lay out their budgets for us.
Correct.
You go first, Megan.
No, go ahead.
I had a couple of questions and I think you, I may have, you may have answered this about that tab for the summary, but will there be a tracking sheet the way, similar to what we had last year? That kind of tracks as we go along in relationship to, I call it the town number, but I think you know what I mean, like what they're budgeting for us versus where we are and what, whether we're, where we are in the delta on that?
Right. Well, we will definitely have a tracking sheet. Right now, we do not have a town number. There is no one set town number per se. There's a lot of different issues. You know, we do have the contractual salary costs, obviously, especially now that we have a number on our unit A contract and we'll have numbers on the other contracts. But really, there's some other, other items that really need to be included in that town number without, you know, going to too much discussion. For example, the prepaid tuitions that we paid last year. While that was not part of our bottom line budget for FY21, that's a recurring cost to us. So that really needs to be part of our, our base budget. It's really not an increase, even though it will be an increase to our budget. So there's things like that, but yeah, we will absolutely have the tracking sheets. I actually pulled out Bill's tracking sheets from last year just a couple of days ago and I love them and we're going to.
Yeah, I love them too.
So we will be following that and that's, you know, that's what I anticipate using one of my extra tabs for is those tracking sheets.
Those were great. I mean, it was a snapshot. And then I just a quick glance, and you don't have to answer this right now, but I want to give you this so you're prepared for it next week. I didn't notice that the budget priorities were reflected in the budget, if you know what I mean. Like for instance, how a budget priority was an HR director and a communications professional. They weren't actually included in the budget. So I want to make sure that we're, we're looking at what those budget priorities are actually going to cost.
Yeah. They, they actually were, if you go to the central admin tab, they're at the bottom of the staffing.
Oh, I started there and I didn't see it at all.
It should be on the last page before the blue sheet, but the, the number.
Because it was staff.
Okay, the blue sheets are existing staff right now.
Okay.
Does not have proposed salaries. If you go to the sheet before that, it will have requested, you know, changes.
Okay.
But I did realize that the number for the HR position got cut off. I realized that about an hour before we started the meeting. So we will make sure we have that number to you for next year.
So.
Sorry, Sarah. Can I just make a suggestion here just because
it's 10 o'clock.
We're coming up to 10 o'clock and we still have a lot to get through. So if you have any specific questions for Michelle, can we take those offline? And then we can kind of dig into the details of the budget books next week.
Yeah, I'll be chatting to Michelle tomorrow. That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because we, and, and truly like, you know, not to silence a budget conversation, but we're, we're doing, you know, hours of deep dive on this next week. So I, I think that there's going to be ample opportunity for, and I know Sarah, you had this a couple of hours before we did. Just because of the, we got it when John walked into the meeting. So, you know, we're literally just opening these for the first time. All right. Thank you very much, Michelle. These look even better than last year if we thought that that was possible.
Thanks, Michelle.
Yeah. Wow, Michelle.
They're getting there. Someday they'll meet my, they'll meet my, my level of expertise here, but not yet.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So that moves us to the much anticipated school name discussion. So I have thought about this quite a bit. So I know that John has some information to share with us. So I'm going to let him do that because our teachers and have been very busy with the, the students over the past two weeks. So we have some information from them. And then we can talk for a short amount of time, but I, I do think it's important that we kind of narrow the field pretty quickly. So I would like to do that in a, I'm going to blank on what the name of it is, but sort of rank, ranked worst.
Ranked choice voting.
Ranked choice voting. Thank you. So we'll number your, when you number them and Sarah, I'll probably have you email John and we'll take a small recess while we, while John tallies these. Five will be your top choice, four next, so on and so forth. One is the name that you actually absolutely do not want as the name of the new school. I'll repeat that, but that's just, I would just wanted to kind of lay those ground rules as we move into this. So I'm going to turn it over to John to share his screen again with information from our schools.
So this is the fun part because you guys did such an exceptional job of doing like a marble head history lesson, but I thought it would be a lost teachable moment for students. And so from Evolith up to the high school, I, and I want to give a shout out to the television production teacher at the high school who took your part of the school committee meeting and made it a section for teachers to show to their students. And so without further ado, I will show you what their results were, or maybe I won't. So as you can see, there's a key at the top and it goes in alphabetical order. And so so these are the staff votes, school by school. And again, it's not 100% of staff. It's not scientific. It just gives you some insight into what the coffin teachers were thinking or village or the high school. And as you see, there is, you know, a case to be made for each of the names being put forward. Two of our teacher, or two of our leaders created that write-in option, which was not allowed. So those results might be a little skewed. And then this for me was wonderful that the students got to weigh in. And certainly if you're a kindergartner at Evolith, you're going to go with things that you know, oh, I know what an anchor is. I like stories. Bell, I know what a bell is. Brown, maybe not their favorite color. So they're thinking, no, not brown. But it's just so nice that they got to have a voice across the district. And again, it's not every student. It's not scientific. Principals put this out to teachers as an optional activity. And so I thought that before you weighed in, you could see some student and staff perspective. I had an opportunity to meet with a coffin teacher yesterday in her classroom and she shared with me a student, what they, they felt and they wrote a little story about it. And again, I'm not promoting any one name. This was the one that came through the nicest in the picture for a slide.
Is that a coincidence whose son that is?
Whose is it? I don't, I didn't even look.
Ben Furman's. Who, by the way, is a very, very sweet boy.
Well, it's a sweet story that he wrote. And really, that's, that's another slide that you don't have any interest in seeing for tonight. So I'll stop sharing my screen and.
Thank you very much. And, and thank you to all the teachers and the principals that, that allowed this to happen because, you know, I think the last week when, or two weeks ago, when we put this forward and sort of talked about our names, it was just a really positive moment within the committee. And so this kind of brings it back to that. And, and that this is a huge responsibility, but also a really fun thing to be able to do. So.
I'm so thankful to have the student impact, the input. Like I said last time, like they're the voice that we don't get to hear from. They're not writing, especially the little ones. They're not writing us emails or coming to public comments. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So I'll kick, I'll kick off because I do think, you know, kind of as I just said, that the student, it was really fun to see from the students and this, and the staff. I do think part of this took a little bit of a left turn online over the past two weeks. And so I, I, I feel like I'd be remiss, particularly as the chair, to not point out that like some of, like a Facebook piece and sort of the campaigning for some of the names. You know, I, I really truly don't care if my name gets chosen. So I'm not offended about that my name wasn't one of the popular ones. But I just wonder what the results would have been if each name had a website devoted to it and, and, and and that if, if kind of each of us had gotten onto Facebook and, and sort of campaigned for our name. But that wasn't the case. And so, you know, I know I kind of flashed, flashed my little ticker tape thing that I did earlier today. But the results are, are substantial and they can't not be taken into account for sure. But I don't know, there's just like, they, I also think they can't be taken at face value. And, and for me, that's a shame. So.
I just want to make it clear that not Emily had not, even though it was Emily's name, Emily had nothing whatsoever. I don't want to, I don't want it to sound like Emily got herself a website and Sarah Gold forgot to do it for story or whatever. Like that, that is not what happened here.
Yeah.
Thank you. I was going to make a comment about that. Sorry, I am. No, that's okay. That was all done outside of this district administration, school committee, everybody, just to make that very clear.
Can I just make a point of clarification on the process that we've gone through too, just for people who might be chiming in in the first place? Is that, you know, this all started about a year ago when Sarah and Jen Schaffner put out boxes for suggestions all throughout the town. I think we had them out for like a month or so and within schools and within the, you know, the community center and places of business for the community to submit suggestions for naming a school. That is where this list came from. And then as a school committee, we took our time admittedly, but narrowed that down. So all of these names were submitted from the community. None of us kind of came up with our own names. These were all community based suggestions. And then once. And then once we've narrowed it down, we've gone out to the community and asked for feedback in a number of different forms, through email, through phone calls. Um, the email was to all the school committee members and the superintendent, um, and also through public comment. Um, which, you know, we had two hundred plus people come to public comment today. We've got a number of, you know, I think, Sarah, you said close to two hundred and fifty people who've emailed us with their feedback. So this was a community effort to get to this name. This is not the school committee, you know, coming up with our own separate names that we might like. These were all based on community suggestions. And then we just narrowed it down for additional feedback.
Yeah, and I I think I thank you, Megan, because I will hop onto that and I because I think that um, the nonsense that was talked about in public comment regarding this process um, is one million percent false. Um, we have a policy within our district that we are tasked with naming schools and and places within schools if we choose to do so. And we don't make up all of our own policies. We rely heavily on the direction of our Massachusetts School Committee Association um, partners and and guidance that they provide. And so if you were to look through, as Emily and I have been doing, and we just recently looked at the school at naming uh, the naming policy, you can look through district after district after district, and this is a school committee task when it comes to school buildings. So to put anything else out there is absolute absurdity to me and it's insulting. Um, so we have been elected to do this job and we are now doing our job. So I will get off my high horse there.
In this past precedent in this town, it's happened before.
Well, and I want to point out, this is not a new policy. It's a longstanding policy that has been on our books for many, many years during um, other people's tenure on school committee as well. This is, there's been multiple chances for other school committees to change this policy and it was not the will of the committee then or or now, quite frankly. Um, so.
And it it has been very important, both in the previous committee as well as this committee, that this was a very community-centered process, as community-centered as we could possibly get it to be. And I quite frankly, think particularly in a pandemic, we've done a really good job at that.
Um, I I do have a question. Is there no, I I know we have our five names, but is there no opportunity for discussion of possibly like a compromise or joining of names? And I know we don't want to make this go any longer, but I mean, I I know ideally, we don't ever try to say like A, B, C, or D, like maybe there's pieces of different things at work.
Can I can I give my two cents on that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, yes, there could be um, possibility for that. I think my only concern with it is that we ask for public feedback on the names that we shortlisted. So to then change it, I think, is not really fair to the community. Um, because then they haven't had a chance to weigh in on that option.
Understandable, but I actually, um, my suggestion came from a bunch of suggestions from the public. And I was like, oh, gosh, why did we not kind of think of that? So I was just kind of trying to incorporate that public feedback.
Yeah, and I I can appreciate that. And if it's the will of the committee, we can look at that. Um, I I would say I don't have a lot of appetite for it. Um, but again, if it's the will of the committee.
And well, and I and I, I'm not muted. I'd just like to say, Sarah, on that too, I've thought about that a lot. And even talked about it in the prior year, but it was not one of the names that I put forward or anybody else put forward. But I'd like to suggest that I think there may be the potential here for this to be a clearly, it's it's a it's been an educational moment, as Dr. Bucky just said, it's a missed opportunity if we didn't um, talk about this uh, with students and um, and I think whatever the vote ends up being, um, take, for instance, the Glover School. There's a little history as you're walking into the school about General Glover, and I think we may have an opportunity as a district to recognize um, all the people on this list. I'm not saying we can't incorporate an anchor somehow, but anchors the only person that's not on the list, but that there might be a way that we could appropriately uh, memorialize and recognize um, these people's names as as part of the the new school project that could be uh, educational and also um, historically important for the town.
No, I agree. And I and I would actually suggest that we add Lizzie Coffin to that list, even though it's not one of our names, but that we
Yep.
We could add that in.
Nope.
Absolutely, I agree.
Maybe there's an anchor as the decal on the top or something.
Uh, I think that's a great suggestion. I think a massive anchor right at the entrance of the school um, would be a great idea.
How do you know it's not going to be the Anchor School?
I mean, it might be, and it'd still be fitting to have a massive anchor at the front.
You do have the architect looking to procure an anchor, and we're going to try and find out what that might take.
Thank you. Thank you.
This has been really great for getting the conversation started, though, a conversation that's long overdue in our community. And I think we all can agree on that. And I think no matter what the name is, we really need to make a commitment in this town through our curriculum, through, you know, maybe increasing our our metco participation, um, looking at things like school choice and what impact that has. Um, but I think that no matter what the name is, it can't be just a name, whatever it is. Um, that that a name is absolutely, to be perfectly honest, nothing more than a token and meaningless if there's if there's not work that goes with it. Um, and whether the the name is the Brown School or or Anchor or anything else, that we have heard the community loud and clear and really the work needs to be done. The work will be done. Um, I have a few ideas myself. I'm sure a lot of people do. Um, but I I think it's a really important discussion that that can't end now. And no matter how this vote fleshes out, um, the the only guarantee of this this discussion and vote is that more needs to come out of this. Um, and and I think I can say you have a commitment from me on that.
I think um, not to hijack this meeting in any way, but Sarah, absolutely, you know, I think I'm not going to speak for anyone else, but I'm sure we all agree with that. And I think it's actually the perfect time since we're about to revisit our strategic plan. Like, this should be part of our strategic plan. We should be looking at cultural diversity, cultural sensitivity, and the teachings we do across the board, the books we read, the history we, you know, teach, the examples we use in some of our um, classes. So a hundred percent like, this is the time to to get on it.
Emily?
So I'm just going to give, Megan teed me up for my what I'm going to say. So as district leaders, we have the opportunity to make real change. And by naming the school, the Lucretia and Joseph Brown Elementary, we can bring our district one step further on our journey to a more inclusive community. We have to think of what type of education we want to give to our students. With this name, we open a door for an education, an educational program that puts front and center the topics of equality and diversity. We want to set our students up to be critical thinkers who know how to navigate through the modern world. Our children should know how to understand different communities, cultures, and see others as equal. They have to learn an inclusive and collective history because we all carry a part of the story. And we must start with our youngest learners and teach them that here in Marblehead, everyone has a voice and our community is welcoming to everyone. By choosing the name Lucretia, the Lucretia and Joseph Brown Elementary, we solidify our commitment for change. So I will step back because I know I'm passionate about this.
I also think it deserves to be noted too, that as John mentioned, as he was updating us on his goals earlier today, um, that he, one of his goals is diversity, um, and and in everything that that means. Um, so, you know, we've got a, we've like Megan said, we've got these fantastic opportunities for growth here and a desire on multiple levels to do that work. Um, so I think again, regardless of what name we end up going with, um, it's been very highlighted that that this is a direction that is important.
Sorry. No, this is just so everybody knows out there that our district is doing stuff. As soon as John got on, he or started, he put us in the um, diversity or equity audit through um, Metco. He put us a professional development program. The students are working with other students to teach them an inclusive history. Teachers want to teach their students about this, and now that it's kind of come up, they're starting to. So we just, like you said, we have to make this commitment, however we do it. I mean, the name aside, that we're doing it, but we need to do more and we need to kind of, you know, take what's already been started and run with it and really, you know, do great, great things.
Embed it within our fabric. Isn't that the saying?
I like that. All right. So does anybody have any last plug for their name? And then I will call for us to do our ranked vote. Um.
Well, since we're narrowing it to two, I mean, I'm going to plug Anchor, but just because I think it's a symbol of our past, our present, and the foundation that we want to build our future on. And it kind of does that for a new school community. So, um, you know, above and beyond what I said last week, but I think one of the people, um, one of the community members who emailed us, um, you said this is the children and educators in our school are going to be our anchor for the community. And so it's a good symbolization of that. That's my plug.
And I'll make a plug. Um, I I chose Belle because because I think it's so important also to acknowledge that we took over a community. We took their community over and their neighborhood over for two years. They, we've, we got several emails from people from that community saying, um, that that they they've called themselves the Belle Community. It's been their identity. Um, and they felt strongly that they wanted to keep that. Um, also mainly because he advocated for funding education. I don't know how many times I can say this, but time and time again, the man spent his entire career through selectmen, through, he started on school committee at twenty-four, through his time as a state rep, always advocating for funding education. And I, that's our job. We if if we don't fund it, it's not going to happen. So, um, that that was really important to me, but also I wanted to suggest, um, I I put a lot of thought into this because I see the importance of the Lucretia and Joseph Brown School. I, there was a few issues with it that jumped out with me mainly because, and I'm going to sound like a crude, it was the bar owning thing and these being small children. Um, but but the importance uh, goes beyond that. And I started to think about um, the speech by Amanda Gorman and how that is an amazing young woman that is of the children's generation that these children are, and how important it is for them to see role models in their own generation, showing them how they they can stand up and affect change and you know, do what needs to be done now in in their time, if you will. And I would feel strongly that I would like to name, um, wouldn't, no matter what happens, our media center for her and dedicate it to her because she's the first ever, um, is it junior poet laureate or?
Youth, I think.
Youth, youth. There you go. And like I said, it's just so important for these kids to have someone in their own generation that um, that they can look to. And what better role model, I think, than that young woman?
Thanks, Sarah. David, any last plug? I'm okay with what I said a couple weeks ago, so.
I'm I'm good as well.
All right, all right. So it is ten twenty-five. Um, Sarah, are you good with emailing John?
It was done ten minutes ago.
All right, um, let's take five. Um, that way, if any of us need to go to the bathroom, we can as well. So we will resume with, we wouldn't have to go on official recess, but we're just going to take five.
Sarah. Sarah Gold. Sarah.
Yes.
I just was wondering if after this, if we can consider tabling some of this stuff until the next meeting because it's already ten thirty?
Yes, we definitely can. Um, I was already going to table the protocols, um, check in, so we absolutely can. We we do um, need to vote the one AC nondiscrimination. I'll explain it when we get there.
Okay, no, I'm just selfishly thinking I'm pretty feeling pretty dead right now.
Yeah, Megan, I think, is about to pass out, so.
I'm eating M and Ms to help.
All right, Megan needs one more minute. All right, John has, John has deemed it so. We are back. And John has the results. So how I'm thinking that this goes is that we, John will let us know the top two that, that came, and then we will have a discussion around those top two and eventually arrive upon a motion to name the school one of those two. John?
Is that the will of the committee?
Is everybody okay with that?
Top two?
Go for it, drum roll.
Okay, in no particular order, the top two, I'll go in alphabetical order, Anchor and Brown.
All right. So there we are, Anchor and Brown, it's now down to two.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So throughout this whole process, I think I've been saying it's important to me to, that this is a community, that this is a, a community event, and this building and its name are gonna be here far longer than any one of us is gonna sit on this committee. Which is why the community feedback was so important to all of us, but to me as well. And I think quite clearly the community has spoken quite loudly. And, you know, that's what I asked for, and I think I'm gonna support that. And I do support it, you know, I think, you know, Emily's made some really valid points and really started the conversation for us, which is an important conversation to have. And now we've gotta take action, and this would be the first step. So I'm gonna, you know, I think the Lucretia and Joseph Brown School is what the community is asking for, and we've gotta, we've gotta live up to that.
Yeah. Emily? I do, but if you wanna go first, you can.
Just real quick, when we were out, you know, selling this building to the town, we, the big proponent that we would always say is that this is a community building, and we built it so the community can use it. And so kind of going off what Megan said, the community has really come out and spoken. You know, we've had overwhelmingly, overwhelming support for this name. So again, I'm gonna push the name that I chose. But I think we have to remember that it's, you know, people came to us and, yeah.
And I think it was important from the beginning that I heard, you know, kind of that original list that, that was put into the little boxes, that, um, that it was not, and I wanna be careful here, that it was not another male, white male of our history, which are, you know, we, we certainly honor them. And that we look kind of outside of that box, I think, is where we were directed to go. And in spite of putting Joseph Story forward, you know, as the name that I fell in love with, I, I think last, you know, last meeting, I talked about some of the ways in which I tried to kind of get at other history in Marblehead. And so I think that for me, this name certainly gets at that. I also really appreciated, and I actually think the woman who spoke at the beginning in public comment mentioned this again, I really liked, someone pulled our attention to the concept of it being a couple that we're naming this building after, and I really liked that idea. I liked the idea that, that it, it, you know, it's, work is better with, when, when you've got a team and when you're working together. And so that sort of stuck out to me as we, as I was reading through the emails. And I, you know, I, I took very seriously the emails that we were getting as well about that we're not really ready for this, that this is sort of virtue signaling. And I think, you know, we've spoken to that point about intentions within, within our curriculum, directions we would like this district to go. So I think that goes to that directly. But I also, behind the scenes, sort of took a step back and, and, and literally, I, I went to a few trusted people in my life and, and asked the question, okay, so, you know, if, where's the finish line then for us? You know, if we, if it's not now, where, when is it? And, you know, obviously, school naming opportunities don't come up very often. So that was sort of where I got stuck, as to why, why shouldn't we? If we're, if we're given this opportunity and this is where we want our, our district to be moving, you know, why not now? Like, it makes, it makes more sense in that I don't want to be held back because we have work to do. Because there's always going to be work to do, in my opinion. And I think that's, that's an opinion that's supported elsewhere as well. So that really was, was where Brown rose to the top in my thinking over the past two weeks.
So that was a big concern for me, Sarah. That was a big holdback. You know, some people spoke very eloquently about the virtue signaling. We even got some emails from people of color who felt it was extreme virtue signaling. And, and I don't want, I don't wanna be the school committee that, that gets labeled as making an empty gesture and patting ourselves on the back for being enlightened and, and no follow-through. So I think that we really, really have to put our money where our mouth is and see this through as far as we can. Because I don't think when our time here is done, that this is done. So that's why I say as far as we can. I would make a motion, but I really think that Emily has earned that and, and should make the motion.
I've never done this before, okay. Sorry. So I, wow. I make the motion that the new elementary school be named the Lucretia and Joseph Brown Elementary.
Seconded.
Elementary School.
Elementary School. Sorry.
Seconded. Any further comments on that? All right.
We will, we will have future naming discussions on the other areas of the school.
Thank you, Sarah. I, I've been waiting to say that, to make sure that this is actually the direction that we were gonna be going in, because I do think that that's incredibly important. I think for me, and I actually haven't said this yet, because for me, I really struggled with, and then I ended up lumping story in with this, um, struggled with naming the building, uh, one of the names. I, I heard that feedback from a lot of the teachers, particularly the ones who are moving into this building, that it would be really bad for morale to, to pick one of those names. And I think there's a case to be made for picking any of those names, and then the case to be made for, for going a different direction. And again, I think I said this, one of the reasons I liked the story name was because I liked that double entendre piece where you could create a new story with it. So I think that, that there goes along, that goes a long ways to sort of just creating this culture they can move forward and, and get, and, you know, pick a new mascot and, and really start to have some fun with this while some, you know, hard work is done behind the scenes as well and as it, as it rolls through. So, yeah.
And, and I, I think we've set our piece on it, but let's just reiterate. We, you know, things kind of went sideways this week, and we hope moving forward that will not happen again. It reflected poorly on us as a committee. It report, it, it.
Didn't reflect poorly on us.
Well, I think to some people, David, they thought we engineered that. I got a lot of negative feedback.
Oh, well. Sorry, I'm not taking, I'm not gonna say that it reflected poorly on me. I think the process, we heard from the people, and we heard from people outside of, I, there were just straight-up emails, too. I mean, there were lots of straight-up emails.
No, no.
Totally unrelated to any other sideways movement.
Yeah, that's an important note.
Yeah. No, 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 and that's not the only driving force here. We had a lot of community support in and of itself, but just moving forward.
Yep. All right. Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yes.
The new school has a name.
Well done, well done, everybody. You know, the entire, everyone who participated in this process.
Absolutely, and I did wanna say this, too. I probably will not be emailing all 200 and some odd people back saying thank you for your, your thoughts. So I'm saying thank you for your thoughts right now.
From all of us.
From all of us, yes. Thank you to everybody.
What it gets, Nick, every school becomes something else, so it'll be interesting to see what this becomes.
Very exciting, all right.
We did it, we're finally over the hurdle.
Did it, yep.
All right.
All right. Given the time, I think we are going to move to table some of the things on our, for the rest of our agenda. There are some policy votes, only one of which is actually important. So the AC nondiscrimination policy, we have not read through that one. This is a, that's, I mean, we've done a lot of work on this one over the past year, but it's coming to us again because the district, DUCY, had a, an audit on it, and we are missing the word homeless in that nondiscrimination policy. And so what we're voting on tonight is to approve that the word homeless be added where DUCY wants it to be added.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions on that? Okay, Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Okay, 5-0, thanks, guys. We're gonna table the protocols check-in to our next, uh, our second school committee meeting, the full meeting, which is at the, after February break that will happen, because we've, we do have a couple of budget ones, as well as we may end up tossing one in there over February break, particularly with the pool testing and the plans for pushing further in-person to be approved. Um, I'm going to ask that we wait on any liaison and subcommittee updates, even though I don't think we have any. David, any, anything bigger than the school name for the budget or for the building project?
Nothing bigger than that tonight. We can, we can wait till next week for school project updates. Or you can drive by and see it for yourself.
Can I just, sorry, just one little thing, just because it came up in the Village SAC today, and I said I would bring it to the committee and to, more importantly, to the community forever, whoever's still listening. But, um, uh, there is going to be the, through Safe Roots to School, who've come out and done an audit, the First Annual Crossing Guard Appreciation Day. So nominations are gonna open on February 22nd, and I believe the deadline is March 24th. So we have some time to, you know, for anyone to get some nominations in there. So I just wanted to let everybody know, because our crossing guards keep our children safe day in and day out despite all the, you know, New England weather that we see, and they do it with a smile on their face, and they know every kid's name and the parents' names. So I do just wanna get a shout-out to that.
Can we get that information up on our page?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll send it on to Emily.
Are we just nominating one, or are they all being appreciated?
I think you can nominate whoever you want. That's my.
Oh, you could put every crossing guard in Marblehead?
It's nominations and then the ones picked out, but I'll send you the information and then it's all, it's all in there, so. And thank you to Gigi Breed for bringing that to our attention.
Great. All right, any new business? Okay, um, we did have one correspondence, it's in our packet. It is a letter from Katie Martin. There's also in our packet is the letter that, the, the email that John returned to her. And she asked that this be put into correspondence, and I, I, I definitely need to speak to this. So over the last year and a half, the school committee has earned the trust and confidence of the voters of Marblehead. The open, transparent, and honestly communicated work we have engaged in has brought us to this point. The last election proved our community supports the majority views, positions, and efforts of the committee and elected a new representative to contribute to that. The continued baseless claims of alleged violations and false accusations distract from the committee's valuable time and hard work and have been roundly rejected in many ways at this point. To invest the committee's, the district's, and the community's time and resources in attacks like this lacks transparency and is wasteful. Our voters and our community deserve better. There needs to be transparency behind these kinds of continued efforts to undermine the productive work and collaboration of the committee and of the administrative administration and the will of the people. The committee takes open meeting violations very seriously and is tired of being bullied in session and out by Ms. Martin and her patently false accusations. Because of the seriousness of Ms. Martin's claims in her letter, we did contact our legal representatives, which cost the district money out of our operating budget. The reopening committee was reorganized, or was recognized, sorry, as a superintendent's advisory committee during the school committee's summer retreat this past July. The wellness and the safety committees are also superintendent advisory committees and are not subject to open meeting law. A quorum of the school committee is, for a subcommittee, is two. For anything else, it is three. The reopening committee currently has two school committee members. School Committee Policy CE Administrative Councils, Cabinets, and Committees states that the superintendent may establish such permanent or temporary councils, cabinets, and committees as he or she deems necessary for assuring staff participation in decision-making, for implementing policies and procedures, and for the improvement of the educational program. Functioning in advisory capacity, all councils, cabinets, and committees created by the superintendent may make recommendations for submission to the school committee through the superintendent. Such groups will exercise no inherent authority. Authority for establishing policy remains with the school committee, and authority for implementing policy remains with the superintendent. The membership, composition, and responsibilities of administrative councils, cabinets, and committees will be defined by the superintendent and may be changed at his or her discretion. However, the school committee wishes to be kept informed of the establishment and the dissolution of these groups, as well as their membership and their purpose. The reopening committee fits within every letter of that policy. The school committee also passed Policy EBC, Emergency Supplemental, which gives the superintendent additional decision-making abilities due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Dr. Bucky's been extremely respectful in the use of this policy and has regularly brought recommendations to the school committee when decisions of significant importance are being made, tonight being case in point to this. The reopening committee has made zero policy decisions to date. Dr. Bucky brings topics of concern and interest to reopening meetings, and members give their thoughts. Ideas and concerns are shared. Dr. Bucky uses the conversation to inform his decisions and the recommendation he makes to the school committee when their approval is needed. Dr. Bucky had a conversation about this concern that was raised in Ms. Martin's letter during the reopening committee meeting this past Monday. One participant stated that they sometimes leave these meetings wondering what was accomplished because no decisions are ever made and people simply participate in discussions. This is a very, a very accurate representation of how the reopening committee functions. As this topic was discussed in this week's meeting, it became clear that the true loss in dissolving the reopening committee would be that the parent participation that was found there would be gone. These parents had submitted their letters of interest back in the summer and have been active participants since the first meeting. Dr. Bucky regularly speaks with school committee members, district administrators, and the board of health. The parents are the part of this committee that offer invaluable insight, and they have caused the committee to pause and reassess at points. That would be a far less accessible piece without the reopening committee. I'm of the strong opinion that the dissolution of the reopening committee, because, I'm of the strong opinion that the dissolution of the reopening committee because of the base of, baseless claims of a community member would be a disservice to the district. The reopening committee was also set up as an umbrella committee over all the other advisory committees related to COVID. So if it were to be dissolved, it would seem to necessitate the dissolution of this teaching and learning committee as well, which was, has added and continues to add invaluable direction to the education of Marblehead children this year. In the end, this is one more attempt in a string of misrepresented and erroneous attacks about the open meeting violations that simply do not exist. This committee is committed to the work that it is doing and to following the rules that have been established by higher authorities than us.
Sarah, I have to say, I, I think it's inappropriate that we're using our school committee time to, to continue what seems like a personal, that you're using your, your, your time as chairman to.
Sarah, I fully disagree. This letter.
You, you have a right to disagree. That letter I read, too, it was not directed at you. I, I think this is inappropriate. I think it was grossly inappropriate.
I think that the letter was grossly inappropriate, and I'm tired of it. I'm tired of the outbursts in meetings, and I'm tired of the, the baseless and completely false accusations.
I, I do have to agree with the fact that the letter accused this committee of breaking open meeting law, which, you know, we have to take very seriously. And we do have to get, uh, legal advisement in that case, because if we are in violation of a law, we need to know that, and we need to know how to rectify it. So, which, you know, does come at a cost. But if we're gonna be accused of, or even if someone's suggesting that we might be out of order, we have to follow that through. We have to, because we can't be, you know, acting outside of the law, ever.
I have to tell you, I'm not positive that at all times, we're not breaking the open meeting law. I, I, I mean, it's, it's. I, I, I mean, it's, 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 I wouldn't have gone down this path, but if we open the door, we're going through it at this point.
We didn't open the door, it was asked to be put into correspondence, and I'm not going to not respond to that type of thing.
That, that's fine, but I don't think that you're the only one that gets the, the sole ability to respond, do you?
Oh, I am.
Actually, as chair, she does.
The chair.
She's the spokesperson for this committee as chair.
And I.
She's the spokesperson on things we voted on, we didn't vote on that statement, Meghan. She doesn't get to speak for the committee, she gets to represent votes we've taken.
Well, this was also given to us by, like, the, the determination that our reopening committee is operating within the bounds of open meeting law was given to us by our legal representation. And the policies that were stated in here are straight from our polit, our district policy manual that we set.
My issue is the way that you're handling it, which I feel your tone and your, I, I feel, I, I feel the way that you handle this lacks a sense of professionalism or decorum that would be fit for the chair.
Well, I think that the tone of the email necessitated this. It was highly offensive. It was highly offensive to my work as chair. And as I said, if this were the first time around, it would, I would probably not have caused this type of reaction, but it is continued. Anything else?
I'd like to motion for adjournment.
Sure, yep, we will adjourn at 10:52.
Thank you.